Okay, welcome everybody. Our City Council acknowledges Wurundjeri Wurung people as traditional owners and true sovereigns of the land now known as Yarra. We acknowledge their creative spirit, bungul, their ancestors and the strength and resilience of the Wurundjeri Wurung who have never ceded sovereignty. We also acknowledge the significant contributions made by other Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people to life in Yarra. We pay our respects to elders from all nations here today, present and future. We have all the councillors here, with the exception of councillor Crossland who's on maternity leave, and officers, there are no announcements. Councillors, I'm going to ask you, one at a time, to respond, hopefully I do, to the following question. You familiarise yourself with the matters being presented to this meeting and that you do not have a conflict of interest. Councillor Aston?
I do.
I do.
Councillor Gomez?
I do.
Councillor Harrison?
I do.
Councillor Ho?
I do.
Councillor Wade?
I do.
Councillor Mackenzie?
I do.
And I do as well. Next agenda item is the minutes of the last meeting, the extraordinary council meeting of the 1st of July and the... So I think we're all there at both of those meetings. Would somebody like to move those minutes collectively? Deputy Mayor Mackenzie, seconded by councillor Harrison. Anyone in opposition? No, put that to the volleys, raise your hand. That is passed unanimously. We'll now move over to question time. We've got to ask a question. You'll get three minutes each to ask that question and then we'll do our best to answer it. We're just going to take those who have registered. First person up is Claire O'Shanasy, so if you can just come to the desk here, please, welcome, and just press the button. Thanks Claire.
Mayor, my name is Claire Clario O'Shanasy and this is my question. Can we please collectively acknowledge to their ongoing need for an open discussion about a treaty for this council area? Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you Claire. Yes, I can. And just so you know, later on tonight, we're electing people to be on the advisory committees. One of them was Yana Nagana, what used to be called the Aboriginal Advisory Committee. And there's some really, really staunch advocates of a treaty, including uncle Robbie Thorpe, who's going to, he's been nominated to be on that committee. And I'll make sure your question is also sent to that advisory committee. And I know the senior officer here, who deals, who looks after this area, Kerry McGrath, is also going to say a few words in response to your question. So if you just stay there for one second, if you don't mind. Kerry?
Thank you Mayor and thank you Claire. So clearly treaty negotiations led by First Peoples represents a significant opportunity to address historic and current wrongs, enable self-determination and create a stronger and fairer Victoria. Council offices continue to build really strong relationships with key stakeholders to understand treaty and where is it at, and also the potential role of council. And this includes with First Peoples Assembly of Victoria, the Wurundjeri Wurung. And we're currently reviewing the findings of the Euruk Justice Commission. And as the mayor said, we will be, we, the councillors will be electing the membership of the Yana Nagana Advisory Committee. And this committee will ensure a formal structure for First Peoples to provide strategic advice on a range of issues, including in relation to treaty.
Thank you Kerry, thank you Claire, thank you for your question. The next person registered to ask a question is Christine Maynard. If you're here Christine, there you are, please come to the front and press that button when you start, please.
Good evening. So I appear again with the same question I've had for a long time, as my comment received numerous correspondence through this forum from Kerry. However, I go back to when I attended, Lee sent me the minutes from the meeting back almost 12 months ago, so this email's dated the 16th of the 9th, 2020. So this is in relation to the over $3 million that ratepayers are owed in relation to the failed supervised injecting room. Now, I'm not only including that, I'm including places like the council attends regularly and cleans up after DFFH facilities. And this is not something that my rates or anyone online should have to be paying for. So the minutes were, and like I said, Phil has kindly sent these to me, that it was stated that there was $1.7 million that was owed from mid-2018 and considering simultaneous services, the expenditure for the entire period is likely to be a proper million dollars. Okay, so we can now add another 12 months and I think it's just disgusting that I'm still sitting here with a CEO in front of me who's quite openly been quoted as catching up with state government, other mayors, whoever else is responsible to get this money. And 12 months later, then this document is being sent to me and that I've asked the question so many times and not one person in this place has a million dollars. Now, that's the money that we know about. And I know the guys that are down at Little Butler Park all the time, cleaning up every day, when there's cameras around or they know media's around or a special person's coming, there's a big clean-up. And so who is paying for this? We are. This is not a council-run facility. It never was and it never will be. And I don't want to hear the same, the same information said to stand Kerry's just doing her job, but I would like to know from the CEO, and I've written to Sue myself, who's never responded to me, with what you are going to do to get this money back, that is our money, that should be used to clean up the place, should be used for different services, not something that's run by the state government. Thank you.
Thank you Christine. I'll respond to that and if an officer wants to add to that stuff to them. It is, this supervised facility is definitely a state government facility, as you know, as you said, that's correct. And in my opinion, they should be picking up the needles, which we want off the street for obvious reasons. And I also agree that it's cost shifting, which I think you might have mentioned, but I think you'd agree that that's what it is. The bad news though, is that it's all symptomatic. It's not the only bit of cost shifting that we're dealing with as a council. They're not giving us the $3 million that you referred to. We've also got, from the 1st of January just come, and we've got this congestion tax, which is going to be devastating, in my opinion, to businesses and car parks in the area and potentially the closure of both of our car parks, if you're here, listen to some people. We've got the Emergency Services and Volunteer Fund, that the officers have told us is a $14.6 million hit to the city of Yarra residents. The new charge for developments near new station precincts, which doesn't affect us, but it's obviously a hit to Victorians. The, you know, the suburban rail link infrastructure contribution levy, the windfall gains tax, the land tax, I mean, the list goes on. So when we ask for the $3 million for this, it's almost like we're asking Dracula not to suck our blood. I mean, it's inherent in that they will try and spend as much money of ours to do jobs that they should be doing. So we'll keep, continue to keep banging on that door and I'll make sure, I'll personally make sure, I'll make this pledge to you personally, that I'll keep you inside the loop on that matter. Are there any officers that want to add to that or is, no? Okay, thank you Christine.
Mayor, could I just quickly ask a question?
Absolutely. Councillor Wade?
I've had a few people message me saying that the online stream is like cutting out five seconds at a time, every 10 seconds or something. Is it possible to reset the machine or something?
Just to governance, did you get that? Yep.
Sorry, I think I said every five seconds, every 10 seconds is what I meant. So it's like...
Okay, governance are saying they're all over that. Thanks for letting us know, that's really important. The next person is Steve Harrison, welcome Steve.
Thank you, good evening. Eight weeks ago, while standing on the pavement on the corner of Bridge Road and Burnley Street, Richmond, waiting for the traffic lights to change, I was deliberately ridden into by an adult male Lime e-bike rider. I suffered a hip injury. I filmed the incident as I'd seen the man riding erratically on the pavement opposite moments earlier. A third party witnessed the impact and volunteered to be a witness for me. That afternoon, I reported the assault to Victoria Police and presented my videos. At least two councillors have already seen the videos and I've included it here so the other councillors and senior staff can see what happened. The cycle lane is three metres to my left and the rider made no attempt to use it. The Lime e-bike does not have a unique identifier anywhere. This is against the signed agreement referred to below. Police officer Hardy handled the investigation and wrote to Lime requesting the identity of the rider. The e-bike was hired using only an email address. Lime provided the email address, but either wouldn't or couldn't provide the identity of the rider. Officer Hardy wrote to the email address, but held out little hope of any response and unsurprisingly, there wasn't. My councillor followed up with Victoria Police to ascertain the situation and spoke to Sergeant Jim Scanlon. Sergeant Scanlon informed my councillor that Victoria Police would need to obtain an international warrant and that is done only in the most extreme circumstances. Unfortunately, Victoria Police are currently 1,200 officers down and understandably cannot spare any resources. On the 6th of August, I was contacted by a reporter from the Age. I provided her with the videos and described the process I had been through. I also stated that the state government had just passed a bill in Parliament, the Vehicle Sharing Scheme Safety and Standards Bill 2025, that received royal assent on the 5th of August. The holes in the legislation regarding hire e-bikes and accountability has not changed and not been plugged. I also informed the reporter that Lime has operated in the city of Yarra since 2020 after council, under delegation to the CEO...
Thirty seconds.
...signed a memorandum of understanding with Lime. It is noteworthy that other councils who sign this understanding may get publicly available. Yarra does not. An obvious question is, was council consulted on the Vehicle Sharing Scheme Safety and Standards Bill prior to its passage through Parliament? Finally, can I, can council provide one reasonable argument why the citizens of Yarra should tolerate being ridden into on the pavement by higher e-bike riders who have no regard for their safety? Will the CEO show its citizens some respect and leadership and tear up the memorandum of understanding tomorrow, please?
Thank you Steve. We've got the response from Mary Osmond, please.
Thank you for your question Steve and I appreciate you sharing what was a very scary incident and I have, I have seen the video that you have sent through. Just for clarity, cyclists beyond on hire bikes or privately owned bikes are permitted to ride illegally on designated shared paths. Children 12 years old and under can legally ride their bikes on footpaths and adults can ride on the footpath if they're accompanying and supervising a child. Neither of these appear to be the situation that you're describing and I note you have reported the incident to the police who are the correct jurisdiction. With respect to the MOU, officers are reviewing the MOU and will consider this as part of the permanent eastcooter public tender process. Thank you.
Thanks Steve.
Thank you.
The next three questions are all from members of the Elphington School community and I was just wondering, I mean, I'll leave it up to them, I'm quite happy to not do it this way, but this is a suggestion. So we hear the three questions, one after the other, so we have a proper listen and then we have the response from, you know, whoever, officer or whatever councillor wants to speak. So if that's, unless there's a problem, like I'm quite happy to do it one at a time, but it just seemed more logical, then you'll get a better, you'll get a better run, you know? So the first person I've got is George Tsianakis. George, are you here?
Yes.
Welcome George, come up to the front please. And when you get here, when you sit down, just press that button to get, when the red thing's on, you'll get three minutes, starting from then. Welcome. Beautiful, perfect.
Aye, thank you. Good evening Mayor Jolly and councillors. I'm here to ask the council of 2025 to reconsider the decision of the 2021 council to remove the Old Heidelberg Road fence and gate because student safety is at risk. My name is George Tsianakis, I'm a year 12 student and vice captain at Elphington Grammar School and I've proudly been part of our school community since 2016. My family and I have lived in Como Street, Elphington for eight years. I first spoke on the issue of the Old Heidelberg Road for the Victorian Parliamentary Prize about this very risk. That was three years ago and we're still here, still asking for the same basic protection. The latest proposal is asking our teachers to manage moving vehicles instead of focusing on teaching. Further, a fatal accident has already occurred near this very gate on a road that's not fit for purpose. No wonder teachers are leaving the profession in droves. Old Heidelberg Road is deemed a road in name only. It has no function as a road. It leads to nowhere and serves no purposes as a road does. What the people of Elphington want is safe access to the bike path, not a drive-through. The area around the school is already congested, removing the gate to allow cars to enter the eastern portion of the road when they have no exit point is unlike any other school anywhere. Taking away the safety barrier of the fence doesn't reduce risk, it just creates more. Some may say, why should Elphington Grammar get special treatment? Surely there are other schools without a gate, but this is not true as our school is in a very unique position. We have been compared to Elphington Primary School, however, this school sits entirely within one suburban block with exit points on all four sides. The traffic is restricted at all times of the day. Additional protective guardrails exist between the school fences and the road. We have no such plans for our school. Students make 1,600 crossings a day. It's a recipe for another tragedy, given the gradient of that road. Take away the fence and there's nothing between cars and children. Despite all I've outlined, I've heard the spin that Elphington Grammar is elite. Like many families at our school, our parents work hard and have made sacrifices. Many students work part-time to be able to get the education that suits them. Our community is diverse with students from many cultures. This is the new face of our school and we're nowhere near sleepy Elphington. If the gate goes, drivers will realise they have nowhere to go and be forced to do a three or five point turn and exit. No school in Melbourne has this set up. Further, none of our school community suggestions have been considered in the design stage of the current proposal. Vic Roads has already rejected your plans for Old Heidelberg Road on safety, environmental and cost grounds, yet over $400,000 of public money is allocated in this budget to remove the gate and reopen the road to vehicles. Over 4,000 people have signed the petition to keep the gate, that's our community voice. Please keep the fence and gate to keep all children safe.
George, thank you, that's smack on time, thank you so much. The next person is Vivian Nicou. Welcome Vivian.
Good evening Mayor Jolly and councillors. I'm Vivian Nicou, the principal of Elphington Grammar School. I first addressed Yarra Council in October of 2021 during the Have Your Say About Old Heidelberg Road. At that time, I spoke on behalf of 550 students, 1,000 parents, 110 staff and over 250 after-hours students in community and sporting groups who use our facilities seven days a week. Today, I represent 800 students, 1,600 parents, 172 staff and more than 300 after-hours participants. This is the changing face of Elphington and the school. Over my 12 years as principal, I've worked closely with the Yarra Council traffic engineers to improve safety and traffic flow in and around the school. Together, we've removed rubbish and recycling trucks off Old Heidelberg Road. We've relocated buses from Old Heidelberg Road. We've realigned car parks to make it safer for student movements. Parking and drop-off areas have been moved further along Lucerne Crescent. Together, we even explored a kiss-and-drop slip lane, but this proved impossible due to the restrictions of Old Heidelberg Road and Lucerne Crescent. It's years of work with Yarra traffic engineers. Despite these efforts, traffic is increasing in sleepy Elphington. 61 students arrived by bus, 14 by bike, the remainder walk, catch the train, but most are driven. We've staggered the start and finish times of the school to help with the traffic flow. I'm pleased that there is under consideration a one-way traffic flow solution on the radar. In 2021, only four submissions came from our 2,000-strong school community compared to 270 from people who believe they could gain an access to the Darabben Bike Trail or who wanted access to the bike trail. These numbers didn't seem strange to those making the decision in 2021. Many of our families who don't have English as their first language were never given the opportunity to participate. The process left our community unheard, leading to the Ombudsman getting involved and months of lobbying here in this chamber, with new council rules further limiting public engagement. In June this year, we were advised to lobby other councillors, but most have shown no interest in revisiting the decision. With no other option, our community's voice is now in a petition, signed by 4,072 people, last time I checked. If numbers matter, how does 270 compare to 4,000? Historical photos show that fences and gates have been there because it was a private residence and they started at Lucerne Crescent and went all the way down. Multiple risk assessments have been done, nobody suggests that you shouldn't open Old Heidelberg Road. It's called Old Heidelberg Road for a reason. It's redundant, it leads to nowhere and it benefits no one in Elphington and the Yarra community.
Thank you Vivian, your time is up, appreciate that. The next person is Michael Karamitos. Please come to the front, one of the buttons, one of the lights are on there, so you can just maybe use that one. Thank you, and your three minutes will start as soon as you start speaking.
Good evening Mayor Jolly and Yarra councillors. My name is Michael Karamitos, current Chair of Elphington Grammar and Board Member of the Greek Community. I've served six years on the school board, 10 on the Greek Community and am a past parent of two AGS students. Over the years, I've been directly involved in matters affecting Old Heidelberg Road, including the Vic Roads acquisition, defining of property boundaries and access issues on Old Heidelberg Road. This is the only public opportunity I've had to address the new elected council on two critical matters that have... two critical matters that have unnecessarily divided our community. Firstly, child safety. All board members, including Yarra, have a shared responsibility to protect students socially, emotionally and physically. These concerns have been outlined earlier. Secondly, the wasteful allocation of public funds. 403,000 in the 2025-26 budget towards a piecemeal plan for Old Heidelberg Road that will continue to draw on the public purse without delivering what residents actually want. Safe access to the bike path, which clearly cannot happen using Old Heidelberg Road. For four years, the Greek community, as the landowner, has offered practical, no-cost and low-cost solutions to Yarra Council, including keeping the central gates open outside of school hours, maintaining the eastern Old Heidelberg area, playground and fences, the boundaries, providing linings for pedestrian safety, cleaning fallen trees and purchasing the disused Old Heidelberg Road at market value. Late last year, we offered 1.39 million based on an independent sworn valuation dated 2022. That offer to purchase with the new valuation to take place still stands. This is supported by an updated survey, plan clarifying land and boundary lines, informational, information that wasn't available to council in 2021. The decision to discontinue the road has precedent. For example, Zetlin Road in Abbotsford, Abbotsford-
Thirty seconds.
Was closed with gates across the reserve, cutting public access. By selling the disused road, we could inject over one and a half million into Yarra projects, save the allocated 403,000 and still enable a safe connection to the trail. My question is simple. What is the forum where the Greek community, the school and the council can work together to achieve a practical, financially responsible outcome for Elphington residents and the school population?
Thank you, George. Michael. I'm going to start off with response from Sam Hewitt, the responsible director, and then the CEO wants to say something. Are you okay with that, Sam?
I am, I'm just synchronising watches, Mayor, with the CEO. Thank you to George and Vivian and Michael for your questions. Council's decision-
Just before you go for the, can you just turn your microphone off and just, just go back, because you won't be able, yeah, thank, thank you. Sorry, Sam, continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Our council's decision to open up Old Heidelberg Road in Elphington followed a period of community consultation in 2021. I think the CEO might elaborate on that further. At that time, there was an overwhelming response from locals demanding that council insist that the road be opened up by removing the gates across council's public road. Council has carefully considered the various matters raised by both the local and school communities. It has concluded that a raised compliant pedestrian crossing, appropriate signage, line marking, along with other civil improvements like drainage, footpath, curb and channel and reseal works are suitable works for a road with school campuses on either side of the road. Council's position was based on a strong legal position and the decision it took was lawful. Illegal structures over public roads like Zetlin Street and laneways are not permitted elsewhere in Yarra, as has been the case in Zetlin, and council has confirmed that it won't be permitted here. CEO might add?
Did you want to add to that?
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's worth, Mayor, if I can, just reconfirming some of the history, because I have to say I don't agree with the characterisation of the questions in some instances. Council considered this matter in August 2020, following a decision by the school to construct a brick and wrought iron fence across Old Heidelberg Road on land that is not owned or controlled by the school without the approval from council. Council's got a legal and statutory responsibility to manage public roads, including the removal of any unauthorised obstructions. And in this regard, council's actions to remove the gates, which is upcoming, and the fence is in line with that statutory responsibility. In terms of the community engagement, in the first instance, I think it's really important for the submitters today to recognise that there was no legislative requirement for council to do any formal consultation in relation to this matter. As the responsible authority for Old Heidelberg Road, council could have lawfully directed the school to immediately remove the obstructions, i.e. the fences and the gate, placed on the land without any consultation occurring. But notwithstanding that, council did do a really comprehensive community engagement process in May and June 2021, which elicited significant community feedback. The council report that outlined the concerns and the position of the community in response to that engagement process was on the 5th of October 2021. All of the submissions received were listed, and they were in fact categorised into three separate attachments, the first being submissions listed strongly favouring the continued restriction to public access, so in other words, the support for the school, one listing submissions strongly favouring the opening of Old Heidelberg Road, and one listing submissions suggesting more limited public access to Old Heidelberg Road. This included submissions from the Vice Principal, the Parents and Friends Association of the school, the school council being the Board of Directors, Elphington Grammar on behalf of Elphington Grammar and parents of students. A number of people also from the school also attended that council meeting, and subsequent to that during 2022, when I started, this was a topic that was very much live in the community and being discussed widely, widely. And there were at least two council meetings where there were more than sort of 20 or 30 people from the school represented, had the opportunity to ask questions that were answered then. So I think councillor and mayor, with respect, it's not correct to say that the community has not had a say and that council hasn't given due consideration to all of the issues. With regard to child safe standards, I think it's an important point to make. I acknowledge the school will have an obligation to comply with the standards, the child safe standards, and this is advice that I provided in writing to the principal in 2022. The child safe standards as such do not apply to councils in relation to the matter of public rights to have public access to public road reservations. And it is understood to be a general practice for schools to place boundary fencing on their property abutals with public road reservations and other, with other adjacent properties. And I personally met with the school and met with the school in 2022 and 2023, throughout 2023, to provide the school the opportunity to erect the fence first before the gates and the barrier across Old Heidelberg Road was to be removed. So it was about trying to achieve, help support the school to achieve compliance with the child safe standards and as part of council's attempts to support the school to be successful in this issue. So I support Sam Hewitt. The decision was made by council some time ago. I can see no reason to revisit it, there in fact is no report, and would also just state that there are a number of schools across the state that have campuses that cross two roads. So thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity.
Thank you, CEO. Okay, thank you for your question. The next question is from Meredith Kefford. If you're here, Meredith, please come to the front. Just press the button, please, when you get here. Um, yeah. It's, I think it's at the, I can't, not really-
It's on the right.
On the right.
This?
Perfect.
Thank you. Yeah. My question's about the 12-month trial of free parking in Richmond shopping centres. I just would want to know how that trial is to be evaluated? What's being measured? What are the indicators of success or not? That's it.
Thank you, Meredith. Mary Osmond, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Meredith, for your question. An initial report will be put to councillors in October, reporting on the progress of quarter one of the trial. This will include an analysis of a number of key data points. Some of those will include parking occupancy and duration of stay, activation of parking sensors, a session, sorry, changes in parking behaviour, feedback from the public and local business and economic spending patterns. It's too early to define exact what success or failure of the trial will look like, but the primary goal of the trial is to increase local economic activity, improve parking accessibility and enhance the overall experience for these precincts to attract visitors. So thanks, Meredith.
Thank you. The next person is Lisa Magnussen, on behalf of Yarra Climate Action Now. Lisa, you're welcome.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor and councillors. I'm asking a question about lighting in City of Yarra. Lighting in Yarra streets and public areas is important to maintain the safety of people using these areas at night. However, the impacts of light pollution are harmful to wildlife and ecosystems, interrupting normal behaviours, increasing risks from predation, impairing navigation and reproduction. The impacts on insects, birds and animals can be mitigated by implementing best practice principles established by the Federal Department of Agriculture, Water and Environment. Can you please outline how council manages public lighting to minimise diversity impacts while promoting community safety?
Sam Hewitt, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for your question, Lisa. Lighting proposals for streets and roadways will always be assessed against the relevant Australian standard and will be audited by council staff prior to any upgrade proposal to City Power. All lighting proposals in open spaces should be consistent with council's public open space lighting policy, which ensures commitment to safe perceptions of space and nighttime experiences for pedestrians whilst minimising impacts on native flora and fauna in areas with high habitat values or environmental sensitivity. Lighting should be focused and provided only where outdoor lighting solutions facilitate perceptions of safety, impacts on fauna, impacts on local residential areas, community character, legibility and appreciation of form, wayfinding in darkness, equal and inclusive access to public spaces and sustainability. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Lisa. The next person is Elizabeth Clark. Welcome, Elizabeth.
Good evening, Mayor Jolly and councillors. Recently councillor, recently Mayor and councillor Ho appeared at a public hearing for the Victorian Government's parliamentary inquiry into the redevelopment of Melbourne's public housing towers. At the hearing, councillors said Yarra City Council strongly opposed the demolition of all 44 towers, when no engineering assessments or costings had been released. Asking for the economic, engineering, logistical, sociological and climate data is sensible, but rather than reserved judgement, Yarra decided to oppose demolition. Quoting an article from the age 6 of August, that's last week, "Under the state government plan announced by Premier Daniel Andrews in September 23, all 44 towers will be demolished and redeveloped by 2051, starting with three occupied towers in Flemington and North Melbourne and two unoccupied towers in Carlton. While there'll be a 10% increase in social housing across the sites, only the towers in Carlton will return as public housing. Thanks to federal funding, the rest will be managed by community housing providers, which advocates have previously warned could lead to higher rents and weaker tenant protections." Harriet Shing, the minister overseeing the development, told the inquiry, despite spending $110 million a year on maintenance, it was swimming against strong deterioration. She described the redevelopment as a staged, careful and considered process to take place over 30 years, and that so far, 88% of residents in the first stage had agreed to relocate. The department secretary said many towers failed standards of accessibility, sustainability, ventilation, noise, private open space and safety. The asset manager at Homes Victoria, Martin McCurry, told of nightmares like failing sewer stacks, and there were 20 kilometres of sewers that needed to be replaced. Also, concrete spoiling, where concrete surfaces break away and can lead to concrete cancer. It's a huge decision. And the government's made public just 12 of 146 documents, despite the Greens' attempt to compel publications through the parliament. We need a decision based on reason. Here's my question. Does council believe the future of the towers is a fait accompli? That the decision has already been made with demolition the best way to provide upgraded accommodation for more people into the future? And what informed Yarra City Council's decision to oppose the redevelopment?
Thank you for, Elizabeth, because that probably is the most important question anyone in Yarra could ask to counsel, because 12 of the towers are here in the city of Yarra, as you know, and they are made up of the most disadvantaged people in our community living on those towers. So often, we have our flotsam and jetsam, and we have a few disagreements, it would have noticed here at Yarra Council, but there's one thing we're united on, is that we support public housing tenants in the city of Yarra, and we support those towers. And if I can take this opportunity to also acknowledge the leadership shown by our state member, Gabriel De Vettrey, the state member for Richmond on this matter, and the leadership in terms of her words and also her actions, and we're all at one on this matter. We have listened to, in fact, at the same inquiry that you referred to, the architect of the, of the towers, and also the office group of experts, who have both said the same thing, that they believe refurbishment is both cheaper and better for the community and for the, and for the citizens of Yarra. The state government say that's wrong, but unfortunately, they haven't released the Cabinet's submission papers to back that argument. So theoretically, if tomorrow morning the state government released the papers and they could, and that those papers proved that those towers are about to collapse, obviously, obviously, we would say, and Gabriel, we'd all say, because we put safety first, that they should be, people can't live in that situation. That would be the same for a private multi-unit development too, by the way. But we're of the view that that's not the case, especially on Fitzroy, where they've recently been refurbished, maybe 10-odd years ago. So if those people who are saying that Yarra Council and Gabriel De Vettrey and others are wrong in this matter, have got any evidence to say that we're wrong, they should actually release it. That's what I'd be doing in their situation. And until we see those, that information, we're sticking to our guns and we're backing our public housing tenants. But I really appreciate you asking that question and giving me an opportunity to respond. Thank you, Elizabeth. We might move on now to council business reports.
No.
Oh, I do apologise. Sorry, who, are there anyone here that, obviously there are, that would like to ask a question? Yes, please come to the front.
Good evening, Mayor Jolly and councillors. My name's Judy Pyle. I'm a Jewish member of the Yarra community, having lived in Language Ward for the last 12 years. Like most people, I was appalled by the action of Hamas on October 7, 2023. History teaches me how people can get to the point of carrying out such barbaric and inhuman deeds. But I am even more horrified by the extent of the Israeli government's unspeakable reaction and by the Australian connections in business and at all levels of government that support that ongoing genocidal response. During the council election campaign in 24, 2024, you, Mayor Jolly, and councillors Wade and Crossland pledged to move a motion to support the Victorian We Vote For Palestine pledge if elected. My question is, in the light of the now even more horrific situation in Gaza, when are you going to move that action, please? And for the people who don't know what this pledge says-
You've got two minutes, so you've got plenty of time.
Yeah. Support a council resolution denouncing Israel's occupation, apartheid and genocidal war on Palestine. Ensure council adopts an active and consistent position on human rights and demonstrates this commitment through its policies, statements and advocacy with state and federal governments. Update council's procurement and investment policies to avoid and divest from companies that support the illegal occupation of Palestine by Israel or profit from it. And I just want to- And I just want to mention in terms of how that might affect everybody here and especially the council in Richmond, in Yarra. BAE Systems, which is a huge weapons company, occupies a position at 40 River Boulevard, Richmond. It's a weapons research and design company and they also promote a programme in schools for kids to to plan weapons, particularly nuclear submarine design, nuclear propelled submarine design. And we know that Israel proudly proclaims that the weapons it sells to other countries are battle tested and they do have dealings with BAE Systems. Our Future Fund...
30 seconds.
Our Future Fund, the Australian Sovereign Wealth Fund, has $26 million invested in weapons research and design with BAE Systems. Do we want to have weapons made in Australia and people killed by Australia? So that's one of the reasons that I really want to know when that pledge is going to be brought up in council please.
Thank you for your question. Just before I answer that directly, just remind you, you may or may not be aware, but there was a motion moved by councillor Nadha Mohammed, second by myself, which was passed, was very, very controversial. Wasn't a unanimous position, I think I can safely say that, but it was a majority vote, to call for ceasefire in the Middle East and you know, you can see all that in the minutes. And if you want me to, I can email that to you tomorrow if you want me to. You're right, the councillor Crossland, councillor Wade and myself made that pledge. Since November, we've been absolutely inundated with all the changes that we're making locally. What I will pledge to you is I will reach out to councillor Crossland and councillor Wade over the next period, discuss this and also discuss it with the other councillors as well. Because the last thing that you want, the last thing that your movement wants is a motion to be put and then not passed, because that will be the front page headline in the Herald Sun and the Age, you can rest assured. So I'll make a personal pledge right now in public to you, that I'll discuss this with councillor Wade. Unfortunately councillor Crossland is nearly finished, but he's on paternity leave. But we will chase it up and if you leave your contact details or give them to any of the three of us, I'll make sure, I'll respond to you ASAP. Thank you so much. Okay, was anyone else would like to ask a question? Sir, yes, come to the front.
Good evening. This is my fifth attempt...
Can you just state your name?
Oh, sorry, Glen Morrison, North Fitzroy resident. This is my fifth attempt to raise the issue of semi-trailers using residential streets and to cut through council speak that refuses to acknowledge the issue and/or answer questions. The fact is that responses have been given at past council meetings. However, not one of the responses has actually answered pretty simple questions. This suggests that council officers do not want to answer the questions for reasons that quite frankly are a mystery to me. And if anyone thinks I'm off course with my critique of council, of council inability to answer questions, it needs to be refreshed on the preambles, the questions and the verbatim answers. I'm happy to give you all the summary of what has transpired in that last four months. Before I get to my question, and because council officers will not answer questions...
Glen, just sorry to interrupt, I'm going to stop the clock so you're not going to lose any time. But I have to say, under 40.1, and I hate doing this, but I'm going to have to say it, debate must be relevant to the motion or to the question or to the statement, not derogatory defamatory of any council member of staff or member of the community. And I think you're really, really on the edge. So what I would strongly suggest you do is get to the question that you've got, rather than the adjectives and so on and so forth, because I don't want to bring down the gavel, but I'll have to if you keep going in that direction. Your time will restart now. You've got two minutes and three seconds, by the way.
Well, I'll jump over the context and get to my question, which is pretty much the same question as last time I was here. And pretty much a repeat of the last four months in different guises. But does a council road manager have the ability to refuse heavy vehicle usage on residential streets as per national heavy vehicle law? When the heavy vehicle is damaging local roads, has an adverse effect on the community, is incompatible with the local road infrastructure and where there is a safe alternative route that exists?
Thank you Glen. Sam Hewitt or someone else, some other officer?
Mayor, thanks Glen for coming again. This is the same question you've asked, as you point out, March, April, May, June this year. You and I have spoken at length on the phone, we've emailed, we've responded through council's customer service. I don't know that I'm going to be able to give you an answer that's going to satisfy you. I will refer you back to the answers I've previously given.
Can you just turn your mic off, please?
There's nothing more I can add, Mayor. The ward councillor might have something further to add, but I don't.
Thanks. Councillor Gomez, the ward councillor.
Through you Mayor, so thanks Glen. Glen's a member of Nichols Ward, which I'm the responsible councillor for. I'm obviously not a traffic expert or a traffic engineer, so I'm not going to comment on the specific questions you've asked. All I know is that in this budget, for the 2026 year, which is passed by the majority of the councillors here, there is work programmed to re-engineer the intersection of Scotchman Street and St George's Road to allow for more, to make it easier for trucks to use it. I know there is the sweatpants analysis done to try and encourage or to make sure that that intersection and that main road, St George's Road, can be used by heavy vehicles. So I can't address specifically your question, but I can just point out to you that, you know, I use the words tide's turning and we are trying to get heavy vehicles to use the major roads as they should be.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's got a question to ask? Okay, will we move along to council business report? Sorry, there is somebody? Oh, yeah, yep, come to the front, yep. Just press the button if you don't mind. Is this about Elizabeth Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got you in the queue. There's just a couple of people before you, you'll be very, very soon, so you're not first though. Can you just wait? Yeah, yeah, fair enough. Yeah, yeah, that's a good call. Carry on. So just for the audience, we're at 9.1, sorry, 7.1 Elizabeth Street Concept Plans. We've got 20 members of the public who want to speak, so they'll all get two minutes each, two minutes each. If there's a translation, under the rules, they get a little bit extra. The two people at the front here have sort of jumped the queue, but we'll go along with that. And then the person speaking after them will be Herschel Landis, followed by Meredith Kefford and then Limo Boyle. So when you start, just state your name for the record. Yep, go ahead.
Good evening everyone. I am Helen. I'm living in Elizabeth Street, Richmond, nearly 40 years. But I am sad from Richmond, council took away this my parking in front of my house. Very sad and too many problems from you take away. And now I got some question for me. Because too many meeting here, I attend too many meeting here about Elizabeth Street. You said you will remove the yellow barack, but I didn't hear anything. Now I got some question for me. When you remove the yellow barack way on the north side in Elizabeth Street, when?
I'll just sort of bend the rules a little bit and just say tonight, we're making that decision. And this is the last meeting, this is the last meeting on this matter. So either we won't do it or we will do it. But if the motion is passed tonight, it'll happen in the next few weeks.
I need to know.
Councillor Ho, can you maybe explain that process? That this is the end meeting, the last meeting of this process? Yeah, please.
And me, I want my request, when you redraw in Elizabeth Street and you can redraw beside Little Bevan and you remove the bike outside. Yeah, now the bike inside, now we want a bike outside in the parking inside. Look like the highest street, you know, the highest street, the bike outside. Yeah, and the parking car in the Bevan.
There's a plan on the table tonight for Elizabeth Street and it'll be voted on within the next hour. And you'll have all the answers to all of your questions after that vote. Can you just, for that record, just...
Okay.
Okay, thank you Helen. Thank you, thank you very much. The next person is Herschel Landis, welcome, followed by Meredith Kefford, speaking on behalf of Wykan.
Thank you Mayor, thank you council. The last speaker raises the question of confusion that's come about by this particular motion. And I've also been approached by Vietnamese, members of Vietnamese community who are upset about the degradation of the bike path. Despite widespread opposition, this council is seeking to shove thousands of cyclists into the gutter. The 49 parking spaces being contemplated will put cyclists, drivers and traffic at risk, expressed in the council's own road safety audit, noting the consultant's recommendation in the report to not install the additional car parking on the north side of Elizabeth Street. The minister has confirmed DTP's advice that they do not support the downgrading of an important cycling corridor and that any new design should meet relevant standards. The City of Melbourne has advised they will be upgrading their connecting lanes in Albert Street. FOI reveal warnings about decisions being made before the fact in the absence of an open and transparent legal process. We've heard statements from the mayor about discussions he supposedly had with the government and the Lord Mayor of Melbourne, but there's been no written evidence. We have seen a process where community submitters have been mocked and denigrated publicly by the mayor, only to have the road safety audit identify those same safety concerns. Another FOI has revealed a more inclusive, a more compliant scheme that was being contemplated last year that could be supported by road authorities and be consistent with the City of Melbourne upgrades. It was a scheme that would have provided greater safety and management benefits for cyclists, pedestrians, parked cars and traffic. The community were denied an opportunity to understand this scheme and that's not fair. And this has been a disappointing process. I submit that this council needs to abandon degrading the bike path, return to the former council decisions and the December road design scheme and a fair and inclusive community conversation about the future urban renewal for the North Richmond precinct. Thank you.
Thank you. Miss Landis, the next person is Meredith Kefford from Wykan, followed by Limo Boyle and then Sam Pussey.
Hi, thank you. I have. Yeah. Now I've lost six seconds. Thank you. I spoke about this on behalf of Wykan at the April meeting, advocating for bike infrastructure that will encourage more cycling. And that's in line with Yarra's active transport strategy, the council plan and the climate emergency plan. All of those refer to promoting more journeys by active transport, bikes walking, public transport rather than private cars, the target being 20% increase in cycling by 2027 and 40% by 2035. To make this work, it's critical to have bike lanes that are in the right places and that are safe, including having barriers, good visibility for turning cars and wide enough for bikes carrying or accompanying kids, cargo bikes and to allow passing. At that meeting, lots of people requested safe bike lanes. Other local people requested access to car parking near their homes or places they needed to access. We were shocked, I'd say, when council rejected the officer's recommendation to modify the current setup to maintain bike lanes that meet safety guidelines and additional parking in favour of options requiring more time and money to be spent and resulting in bike lanes that wouldn't meet safety guidelines. Our rates should be spent on safe infrastructure that will meet future needs. And what do we know about future needs? We know 6,000 more people will live or regularly use Elizabeth Street and that the North Richmond estate will undergo major changes, including potential increases in safe parking for bikes and cars, reducing the demand for parking on the street. We know more people will be using bikes with kids on board, older, maybe wobbly people on electric bikes like me. So please, don't be stubborn. Establish a working group with community members, council members and state government members so that we can get a solution here that meets the future needs and meets the current needs. It's possible.
That's time Meredith. Thank you for your submission. Next up we have Limo Boyle, please.
Good evening Deputy Mayor, councillors. On April 8th, this council voted to narrow the Elizabeth Street bike lanes in exchange of 72 new parking spots. We have now learned through an independent safety review that this plan is unsafe. To mitigate the identified risks, 25 of those parking spots must be removed. The decision was made to trade cyclist's safety for just 48 spots and this was not a fact available to council on April 8th. This was a poor trade made to solve a non-existent problem. Elizabeth Street and nearby streets offer ample car parking for visitors and residents who choose to drive and park. A report from offices to the council meeting on 15 September 2020 indicated nearly 450 on-street parking spaces on Elizabeth Street and surrounding streets and more than 2,500 off-street car parks in the public housing blocks. A report from the offices to the council meeting on 18 April 2023 indicated average occupancy below 60% on over seven counts of car parking data. A more detailed view available in the minutes from 8 April 2025 meeting makes it clear that parking is available not just on average, but throughout the day, on weekdays and on weekends. We're sacrificing safety for a handful of parking bays that we don't even need. The Traffic Works review of the proposed plan has now identified multiple high and medium risk issues generally requiring the removal of the proposed parking. In one amusing case, the specific recommendation from Traffic Works is that council, and I quote, "doesn't install the additional car parking on the north of Elizabeth Street." If council insists on proceeding with their plans, then the only responsible option is option four, which gains the most safety back by removing the most parking. Also of concern is that plans from December 2024 for Elizabeth Street bike lanes were not presented to council. The approved plan cannot be safely delivered. A better plan was hidden from you. The only responsible action is to halt implementation of the April 8th decision and revert to the successful trial configuration and consider the December 2024 plans instead.
The next person is Sam Pussey, followed by Karen Hovenga.
Good evening Mayor. My name is Sam and I live in Richmond. I really believe it's in the best interest of those who drive for us to have great cycling infrastructure. I want to speak to my experience of cycling along the narrow Albert Street bike lanes, just up the road from Elizabeth Street, and use these bike lanes as an example of what might happen if the council proceeds to narrow the Elizabeth Street bike lanes. I've been cycling as my main mode of transport for about 10 years now. I sometimes drive, but the car is normally at home. I'm fairly confident on my bike and I tend to ride faster than others. For less confident riders, having someone behind you is stressful and so I make sure to get out from behind them. The existing bike lanes on Elizabeth Street provide enough space to overtake safely, but further towards the city on Albert Street, the narrower bike lanes don't. When I'm cycling behind a slower rider, I'm not going to overtake them within that lane, putting myself in them a danger. And so I'll move out into the main traffic lane instead. This isn't ideal for me, nor is it ideal for those in cars as they're now going 20 kilometres an hour instead of up to 40. I actually feel safer in the main traffic lanes on my bike rather than the narrow 1.5 metre bike lanes on Albert Street. Because all it takes is a near miss with someone opening their car door, a pothole or poorly repaired section of the bike lane or a smashed bottle or a collection of wet leaves on the narrow bike lane and I'll move into the much safer three metre traffic lane, which provides ample space for me to navigate around such obstacles. And I suspect that there's a number of people who choose to cycle in the main traffic lane. who choose to cycle in the main traffic lanes rather than inadequate bike lanes, or they're forced to intercar, not make the journey at all, or actually have an accident because of reduced margins of safety. I fear that consideration to human behaviour hasn't been made when proposing these narrow bike lanes, because it's all well and good to provide something you think people will use. One only needs to observe how people actually behave. So yeah, through narrowing bike lanes, you'll get more people cycling in the main traffic lanes and more people in cars, which is a lose-lose situation for everyone.
Thank you, Sam. Karen Hovenga, followed by Michael Oxer.
Hi. I really want to stop talking about Elizabeth Street as a conflict between the people on bikes and the people who think that the housing estate residents need to park there. In the future, Elizabeth Street will be the heart of the housing estate. The 6,000 new residents of the estate who will visit new community facilities and shop at the revitalised Victoria Street will likely arrive on foot or by bike from the housing estate. It's exactly how the Vietnamese community developed the Victoria Street identity we know today. At the forum I ran last week, we were told that there are about 750 car parking spaces available to residents on the estate. And we also heard that residents, all residents who own a car, can get a permit to use those. At any time, there are usually 300 car parking spaces empty and unused. This fits with the census data. Only half of the households on the estate own a car. That's 20% in the rest of Yarra. We also learned that residents don't have anywhere to securely lock their bikes. An estate resident, Qua Jin, who regularly rides a bike, spoke about the common experience of bikes being stolen. Of course, the estate residents struggle to see the value of an excellent bike lane. It's much harder to own and ride a bike when you can't store it safely, except in your flat. I'm also concerned about the parking being provided to serve the Vietnamese Buddhist temple that's in the content plans tonight. According to the RSE, those car parks have a high risk of a crash. Wouldn't it have been better to accept the option for two disabled car parking spaces, which was presented at the April meeting? Anyway, we need to pause this conversation and stop talking about parking versus bikes. We need to support the revitalisation of Victoria Street and ensure that the needs of current and future residents are met. We need an Elizabeth Street that includes trees and nature and is a pleasant and comfortable place to walk and ride a bike. This can be done if we work with the community, work with the community to understand local and state context of the street through the adoption of a council working group, as I've said previously.
Thank you, Karen. Michael Oxer. Michael, are you here? Michael Oxer. Welcome.
Is that okay? Mayor and councillors, I just want to make a comment about an interesting historic fact. I speak with regard to Elizabeth Street. Back in the 1970s, when the Housing Commission towers were being constructed, Elizabeth Street was treated largely with traffic coming in from the east in the morning, going home in the afternoon, as a bypass to reduce their trip time, so they would claim. Elizabeth Street has come a long way in the last several years and is now fitted with great separated bike paths, which have greatly improved the safety and accessibility for people who wish to use bikes in that location. So I'm concerned that the integrity of an off-road grade separated, an on-road grade separated facility is not compromised, and that we need to...
30 seconds.
We need to have the level of consultation and develop a really world-class facility, because we need to be looking at 2030, 2040, that the population will be greatly increased. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Next person is Thanh Ha from the Buddhist temple. Thanh Ha, welcome. Followed by Andrew Foo.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm a member of the Buddhist temple in Elizabeth Street. The previous council never asked if we want to have no parking in front of our property when they put the bike lane for the people that don't live on the street. They also never asked if we were okay with no parking for our disabled and elderly people who want to come to the temple. As the minority community Vietnamese Buddhism, we feel we've been bullied and targeted. Those who wanted to take the parking away from us, it is not they want to save the environment, but they also want to show their power, the power of selflessness and races. We feel that. Many people in our community have been mentally suffering due to the temple cannot have any support for their attendance to the prayer session because of no parking, so they cannot come to the temple. For the wellbeing of our disadvantaged people, we would like to have our parking back. Enough is enough. Please treat our disabled and elderly people with respect, because one day we will be them. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Foo, representing the Victoria Street Traders Association. Followed by Hong Trau from the Elizabeth Street housing estate.
Good evening, councillors and Mayor Jolly. I'm Andrew. I'm on the Victoria Street Business Association. I've been a resident, and I've born in Richmond, I've lived in Richmond all my life. And the way that this was conducted in 2020 by the council then, to remove the parking on this street, was done without consultation to the Vietnamese community or the business and traders of Victoria Street. If this was handled in a better way, a lot of these plans that came out back then, why are we having the arguments now, five years later? It doesn't make any sense. At the end of the day, what's being mostly affected right now is the Buddhist temple. The Buddhist temple is a place for fostering interfaith dialogue, creating spaces for shared activity and learning. These efforts often involve committee members working together, renovating spaces and organising events that promote cultural exchange and mutual support. And people travel from the western suburbs of Melbourne, the northern suburbs of Melbourne, the south-eastern suburbs of Melbourne, to come to this temple in Richmond, because it's one of the oldest temples in Victoria. It used to house the highest-ranking abbot in the state of Victoria. He's now retired in Vietnam. The other thing that I like about having this temple here is that it attracts more people to the area. It creates a big community, and that will lead on to Victoria Street and grow the shopping precincts. And yet, we're still having this argument of whether, oh, well, should we leave them or not leave them? Well, leave the parking spots, have a compromise solution for now, and then have a greater community consultation till we can improve it and have a better solution for the long term. But for the moment, right now, as you can see in the front row, members of the Vietnamese community and of the temple and of the housing estate would like to have some parking spots. And I think that we're not going to get the full maximum anyway, but at least there's a compromise on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. The next person is Hong Trau. Hong Trau, if I pronounced that right. Mayor, councillor Ho, please turn me off if I've mispronounced that.
Go ahead. Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah. Welcome. Does she need interpreter?
No, she can speak Welsh.
No worries. Well, welcome.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Good evening, May and all the councillors and all the audience who attend this meeting tonight. Yeah. Other tenants from the High Ride Building in Richmond West. Yeah. I don't have any question. I just support the idea that requested from Ms. Ho. Yeah, she's my neighbour. Yeah. And I think that her question, her request, you know, that's very right and very neat for all of the tenants who live in Richmond West. Yeah, so. And I don't have any regret about that. Yeah. And I just want to say thank you very much for the council to manage this last meeting for that problem. Yeah. Thank you very much. And I hope that the outcome, the outcome from the meeting, you know, will give to us the...
30 seconds.
Yeah, absolutely possible. Yeah. And thank you, thank you for everything. Thank you.
Thank you for your attendance. The next person is Michael Smith, followed by Rebecca Morden. Michael, welcome.
This takes 2 minutes and 21 seconds. I'll try and do it faster. My name is Michael Smith, and I have lived in Elizabeth Street for more than 40 years. Mayor Jolly, the people of North Richmond have long understood that the residents of Elizabeth Street have not always been treated fairly. They were not treated fairly when the current bike lanes were installed without consultation with the residents, who were subsequently told that consultation would begin after the lanes were already installed. They are not treated fairly by claims that any reduction to the width of the bike lanes will result in injuries to parents and children. There is not a shred of evidence to suggest that that is true in Elizabeth Street, and there is evidence to suggest that it is not true, because the police have spoken publicly the fact that in the five years before the current lanes were installed, not one incident involving bicycles was reported, despite the fact that the northern bike lane at that time was narrow, unprotected, and the volume of the bike traffic was much greater than it is now. The residents are not fairly treated when unreported during incidents are spoken of. If the incidents are unreported, there is no data. And unreporting goes both ways. I was hit in the back by a rider who is doing 30 kilometres an hour along a shared path on a sunny Sunday afternoon in Richmond. She cannoned off me into the Yarra, and I got a shoe full of blood and five cog wounds in my left calf. I have photos to prove it. I should have reported to the police, but I didn't report it either. The residents are not treated fairly when comparisons are made with the Netherlands or New York or even Chapel Street, South Yarra. Those places are not Elizabeth Street, and the circumstances are certainly not the same. Above all, residents are not treated fairly when the impression is created that the bike lanes are heavily used, when the truth is that most of the time they are empty, and even at peak times, the volume of bike traffic can easily be accommodated in narrow lanes as they already are in East Melbourne. Mayor Jolly, I ask the council no longer provide in Elizabeth Street an elite situation for a tiny minority of the travelling public, and instead deal fairly with riders and residents alike by giving riders protected bike lanes and residents north-side parking and therefore full access to their properties.
Thank you, Michael. Next person is Rebecca Morden, followed by Alison McCormack.
Thank you, Mayor. Having recently heard Yarra Bicycle Group's enthusiasm for bike corridors, and having ridden myself in places like Copenhagen in Denmark, I'd like to commend them for their vision for the future. However, having seen the very modest daily volume of bike traffic and witnessed the impact on the amenity of residents, that future is not quite here yet. Elizabeth Street bike lane currently stops at Church Street. Thus, the council's proposed solution to narrow the lane slightly and return critical amenity to residents is very sensible at this point in time. It's relatively simple, cost-effective engineering, which is a good idea in light of the building works in the area still to come, massive building works that we're expecting along Elizabeth Street. You'll notice that I said amenity rather than parking, because it's much broader than parking. It's being able to have carers visit you, Uber drivers pick you up, home delivery of items, moving vans, and even emergency vehicles. There is currently nowhere for these vehicles to stop, and that has caused huge upheaval for the community, including organisations like the temple that we've just heard from. Consequently, I support the recent decision led by the mayor and the majority of councillors. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. The next person is Alison McCormack, followed by Jeremy Lawrence. Alison's representing Bicycle Network Incorporated.
Wonderful. Good evening, councillors. Alison McCormack, CEO of Bicycle Network. Elizabeth Street is a designated strategic cycling corridor, a key connection from the inner east to Melbourne's city centre, and it deserves a world-class design. Since 2020, the temporary separated lanes have been working. Yet, instead of finalising a safe, standard design, council risks reversing years of progress by considering bike lanes as narrow as 1.5 metres, well below Victoria's widely accepted minimum of 1.8 metres, and far short of the recommended 2 metres. A 1.5-metre lane is not truly 1.5 metres of ridable space. On one side is a gutter, and the other a curb barrier. The usable width is dangerously narrow, increasing risk for riders, deterring uptake and undermining the strategic goal of active transport growth. Your own safety audit makes it clear reintroducing car parking here will create sightline hazards, forcing its removal anyway. It's a lose-lose, unsafe for riders and of no real benefit for drivers in a street where parking is already underused. And now Freedom of Information documents indicate that key decisions on this matter were committed by some councillors prior to, and without consideration of these plans and recommendations being provided by council administration. These FOI designs have never properly been presented for public scrutiny. This undermines both transparency and trust in the process. Victoria's decades of experience in bike lane design, along with advice from the Department of Transport, bike community groups here in Yarra, Bicycle Network, all point to the same direction, build to recognise standards or risk safety, liability and reputational damage. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison. The next person is Jeremy Lawrence, followed by Christine Maynard.
Hello, Mayor and councillors. My name is Jeremy Lawrence, speaking on behalf of Streets Alive Yarra. Our written submission talked about a range of issues, including the plethora of council adopted policies that narrowing the lanes would be in breach of. However, today, in our verbal submission, wanted to talk about state government policies. Of course, we know that the council's operating under the auspices of the state government, under the Acts of Parliament. And the mayor has stated that the state government is watching the processes of this council carefully.[1691.28] So let's just look at a couple. Victoria's Plan for Victoria, quote, "It's better to walk, cycle and scoot in your suburb. We need active transport infrastructure that people want to use and that connects where they live and the places they want to go", end quote. Or Victoria's Cycling Strategy, quote, "We will draw on the experiences of Amsterdam, Copenhagen, London, San Francisco, Portland and other cities that have built safer, lower stress and better connected networks to increase cycling for transport", end quote. Of course, there are also engineering guidelines, and Victoria is a signatory and a participant of Ostroads. So there's the Guide to Road Design Part III, Geometric Design. Quote, "Protected bike lanes have a minimum width of 2 metres." And so overall, I suggest that this isn't just, oh, and also, we'd have to talk about the practical realities, we're going to have not just the growth around the Richmond Housing Estate areas, but also all around Ikea. There's, there's all the apartments going up, and a lot of those people want to travel back and forth. They're going to use this corridor to get through into the city daily. So I urge councillors to take the state government guidelines and policies into account when making these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person is Christine Maynard, followed by Robert Butterey.
Here we are again, fighting against people sitting behind us that this actually affects. Then we have people in this chamber speaking who don't live anywhere near Elizabeth Street. I'll just quote some of the things that have been said, just 49 spots. "I have a car, but you obviously can't ring the bell of your bicycle, Sam, when you need to pass someone, so maybe you could learn how to do so."
Just sorry, Christine, you can't have a crack at other people?
Yeah, cool.
So just, just stick to the points that you want to make, please.
Yeah, we're revitalising Victoria Street, which has nothing to do with the bike path. But however, we have people here that live on Elizabeth Street that these parks are important. I also point to, um, how dangerous the car park behind, um, the medically supervised injecting room is. I don't really care how many car parks are available. Those car parks should be for the residents who live there, not for people to continue to stir up trouble, go down there and take photos every day, something that doesn't even warrant them being there when there are people who continue to speak how affected they are. We've got a lady that's lived on Elizabeth Street for 40 years. We've got a man who spoke, who's lived on Elizabeth Street. Shouldn't we be listening to the people who this affects? That's very important that we start doing that. And over and over and over again, we sit here and we talk about the same thing. I'm pretty sure I know more important things in this municipality that are much more important, that we could be concentrating them on. But at the end of the day, let's listen to the people who it affects more than the ones that are just here for their own agendas. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got Robert Butterey next, followed by Isabel Abel.
Mayor and councillors, I've lived in Richmond for many years and I live on Elizabeth Street, and I've observed on a daily basis what happens. I'm up for a chat and I've spoken to multiple groups up and down the street, so I have a very good feeling for what happens and the feeling of the street. There's an unwavering request for more parking on the north side of the street. And it's more than just parking, it's regarding safety and amenity. The basic problem is mathematics 101, that Elizabeth Street's not quite wide enough for an ideal solution. So there has to be a compromise, there's going to be winners and losers. And the current compromise dial has been biased in one direction. And it needs to be, um, moved to the sweet spot so that more people, um, get the benefit and, um, the amenity can be rebalanced. The addition of the bike lane has come at a cost. It's withdrawn amenity and, um, safety for residents and businesses along the street. There are 3,000 people in the towers and, uh, they have considerable safety issues accessing the car park. So the number of car parks isn't an issue, it's where they are and they've requested, um, safer spots. The majority of residents feel unsafe and would benefit from reintroduction of parking. The way in which this has been done has created an issue and there are lessons moving forward in how we can introduce further car parks, um, for Yarra. The majority of residents request return of parking and would support option four.
Thank you, Robert. Um, the last, the last three speakers are Isabel Abel, Elizabeth Clark, and finally Lucas Rezzi. So Isabel, you're next, thank you.
Hello, my name is Isabel Abel. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm here to talk to you about the Elizabeth Street bike lanes. So cyclists of Yarra City are entitled to safe and accessible road infrastructure, and the proposed Elizabeth Street redesign is neither, which sets a poor precedent for the future of transport in Melbourne. I know and love the Elizabeth Street bike lane, and so does my partner sitting behind me, who takes it every day to work, and I join him on Saturdays when we come to the Gleedle Street markets. The presented options all include a dangerous narrowing of the protected bike lane. These options give cyclists the choice of riding in the gutter, which risks collision with pedestrians and riding through accumulated debris, or riding in the door zone of parked cars. As one of the only safe and viable bike lanes in the east-west corridor of the area, it makes a clear and insulting statement to those who commute by bicycle. Narrowing this bike lane means it is no longer a practical route for cyclists, which forces us into regular traffic. It is ironic that these plans are designed to ensure the road is better shared between cars and cyclists, yet it forces cyclists into unsafe riding conditions or off Elizabeth Street altogether. When the inevitable collisions occur between cars and cyclists as a result of poorly designed infrastructure, let us not forget who ends up in hospital and who drives off unscathed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Elizabeth Clark?
Context. Technological revolution, the climate's changing, AI is going to change the way we work. Young people are being ripped off again with Gen Z, the guinea pigs for the digital cowboys. Plus, we're expecting huge growth in Yarra's population. Wait till the CUB development gets going. The Elizabeth Street area will change. Please look to the future. How does this relate to a bike lane? Well, you know my passion for bikes, the sensible, practical, healthy, fair way of getting around. Bikes humanise, riders travel under their own steam, powered by their muscles, powered by their breakfast. And you don't ride where you don't feel safe. Drivers will be able to drive more freely if they don't have to take cyclists into account. Thoughtful tree planting would completely change Elizabeth Street. Being squeezed into a narrow bike lane is dangerous. You're dealing with the speed bumps, grates over drains where there's rubbish in the gutter from the last rain and a bottle and Macca's bag spilling out stuff, and you're going slowly because you don't feel safe. Who would overtake on a narrow lane? Not me. If the bike lane doesn't feel safe, the bold riders will simply go back to riding on the road. The streets belong to all of us. They're the veins and arteries of our city. And when our streets get clogged, it stops the circulatory system. But instead of a heart attack, it's a traffic jam. And it affects not just that bit of road, but all around. Bikes don't ask for much, they don't wear out the roads and cause potholes and cost zillion-dollar freeways that cut our cities apart. Elizabeth Street is a vital link in the east-west overarching plan of bike lanes from Melbourne. It's the common good rather than the individual. People only ride if they feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lucas Rezzi?
Good evening. My name is Lucas Rezzi. I live just at the, near the end of Elizabeth Street, um, in Richmond. A lot of my points have already been raised already, so I don't want to repeat them. But I am in favour of maintaining or improving the current bike lane width or exploring alternative parking solutions that don't come at the cost of cyclist safety or network integrity. I, um, have spoken to my aunt last night, who's on the council for a political party on the committee, talking about legislative demands of, across the state. And also, uh, she's saying that it's important that we have that space for wiggle room, for errors, just like we allow for cars. Wide lanes allow for error, and that's the way that roads have been built for a long time. And now, we are bringing back more traffic calming measures to a lot of areas where narrower lanes reduce speeds. That's been great for cars, and I think it's kind of the opposite demand for cycling at the moment. We want wider lanes to encourage more cycling there. On the economic side, I think there's studies from the city of Melbourne and the city of Sydney showing that customers arriving by bike or foot spend more per week at local shops than those arriving by car. And in dense urban corridors, protected and comfortable bike lanes bring more passing trade, not less. This decision is also bigger than one street. If Yarra rolls back safe cycling space in favour of more car parking, it sets a precedent across Victoria. The local politics can override safety standards, even where state and national bodies have been clear with their recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. Uh, Lucas, sorry. Simon Exton, if you can come up here, we'll just take some questions from councillors, if there are any. Or Mary Osman, you're going to be there. And Simon. Okay, so we've got a question from Deputy Mayor Mackenzie to the officers once they sit down, followed by councillor Gomez. Councillor Mackenzie?
Thank you. I just want to ask about, uh, next steps. If, uh, the officer recommendation was passed tonight, what's the sort of timeline? What can we expect? What can the community expect as far as construction and those sort of things?
Is this working yet? Through you, Mayor, um, following tonight, depending on what the resolution is, we will be progressing with detailed designs as per due process. Those will then get submitted to state government. That process, we would look to complete as quickly as possible. We don't determine how long it takes state to provide the approvals or the comments back to us. We would obviously work with state to try and expedite that as much as possible. As stated in the council report, we would keep councillors up to date with progress. I can't give you a specific delivery date at this moment in time, but as we go through the process, we'll have more clarity around that. But as quickly as possible was the short answer.
Councillor Gomez?
I've got, um, four or five questions to put together. They're on point and they're short. So I'll start. So as best discussion we had today, which I want to repeat so the community can hear it, we talked about the integrity of the new design. So I'll just go through it. So Elizabeth Street from Hoddle to Church is listed as a local road under our Register of Public Roads. And list Yarra City Council as the responsible road authority. From my understanding, it's also a municipal road under the Road Management Act. So on that basis, Yarra City Council is a coordinating road authority. So we sort of make the decisions, subject to DTP kind of agreement on certain aspects of the road design, correct?
Can you answer that, please?
Through you, Mayor, that's broadly correct, yeah. There are certain, um, exceptions to that when it comes to works near traffic lights, which is defined in the Road Management Act as major traffic control items.
Councillor Gomez, just settle your questions in one hit, so we can move on.
So the, um, so the, your, oh, sorry, the officer recommendation number four, does it meet or exceed the DTP advice that, you know, that listed in the letter that one parking bed removed in the vicinity of an intersection? Next question I had is, um, does the recommendation address the high and medium risks? That was recommended to be addressed by the safety audit by Traffic Works. It's in the agenda. And in your professional opinion, does your recommendation or does the officer recommendation represent the best way forward to address the feedback from local residents, all residents, and address the recommendations of both?
That's not a question, I'm going to rule that out of order. So can you go to your next question, please?
That was it?
That's a political question, you can't ask officers that. So, so you've got a technical question, can you respond to the technical question, please?
So through you, Mayor, in terms of the state feedback, they provided various comments to us. The state requires approval with sections of road within 20 metres of a major traffic control item. There were some comments made relating to that. There was, I think, one parking space that would need to be removed to comply with that. And the concept design that is attached to this report responds to that request. The concept design and under option four that we put forward responds to the, all the medium and the high-risk items identified in the, um, road safety audit undertaken by Traffic Works.
Councillor Harrison?
Look, I'm just picking up on the feedback that came from some of the Vietnamese community members like Helen tonight, that they're really confused about, um, what's happening and the timelines and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to request that maybe there's some kind of, is there possible to have some kind of communication put out so that those community, because I think we're raising expectations about what's happening and it's, the timelines are unclear. So I, I'm just, I guess, given that we, we understand that there's an issue with DTP making a decision in those timelines, but what can be done to properly communicate to all, you know, coal community members?
The CEO will respond to that.
Thanks for the question, councillor. Whatever decision is made tonight, we'll progress something. We have a project, um, page on our web page for this project. What we'll do is make sure that it's updated regularly and our website is, um, translatable to, um, all of the most common languages for Yarra. And when there's key milestones, what we'll do is we'll issue a bulletin. So really irrespective of the decision, the design that is taken up tonight.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm looking for a way forward. Councillor Aston, you've got a way forward? Uh, thank you, officers. Mary, um, Simon, thank you so much.
I'd like to move the officer recommendation, please.
So that's option four? Have you got a secondary for that?
I do, I will.
Councillor Ho, okay. So on that basis, I'll ask you to, you've got three minutes to speak to your officer recommendation, recommendation four, I should say, of the, of the report.
Okay. Thank you to the officers for putting this, uh, together. This has been a very fractious, uh, project, to say the least. And I think the, the report that has come back, the recommendation that's come back, has done its, the best possible job of coming to a compromise that meets the needs of the residents along Elizabeth Street, that adheres to both the mandatory elements of DTP requirements and continues to have protected bike lanes. Now, I used to ride Elizabeth Street daily before the protected bike lanes, uh, were about in 2020. I have ridden them since. I ride Yarra streets regularly on my bike, and there are very few protected bike lanes. This one will continue to be protected and still be wider than many of the bike lanes that I ride around in, in Yarra. So I do think that this is a good compromise position. Recognising that this is a, an area in Richmond, just in generally, where we do have small streets, it is a contested space and we're never going to make everyone happy 100% of the time. So I do think the councillors have done a fantastic, the officers have done a fantastic job in coming up with a proposed design that meets those different needs in as best as compromise as possible. I also really appreciate the opportunity to introduce some, the opportunity they've taken to introduce some additional safety, uh, measures on side roads, such as the cushioning and the contraflows. I think this is a really good way to make the, the best use of the time that we'll be spending on Elizabeth Street to enhance the cycling infrastructure in adjoining streets. And, um, also increased tree planting along Elizabeth Street. I think that's a lovely thing to do. I, I do note that, uh, many of the residents and bike riders, uh, as well, have said that there's been comments made about consultation. Much consultation that wasn't, uh, taken place before this was implemented as a trial, and a request to have a consultation now. But this has been going on for five years, and it needs to be done and dusted. And I believe that this is the best way to move that forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ho, seconding?
Thank you, officer, for, I support the option four. It's been way overdue on this matter. Five years ago, I was on the other side, asked for a public consultation from the public state with Adam and Elizabeth Street resident, but our voice never been heard. And this has carried on too long. And I feel that this, today, this decision is not attacked lightly. I went to the phone, Karen, and showed her initiative. Thank you for that, for the field chief. But this is for the people of the local North Richmond resident, but also the people from the public side. I know safety is the, the main key point here. But during the, the officer worked so hard over the period of the last 12 months to make this safety as it is. And I'm not disagree or agree with the, the bike advocate. I do see that the safety should be implemented, but there's also need to be car park in front of the resident and from the temple, from the Vietnamese community, but also there are the diversity. I'm not attacking this lightly, but I do fully support. Please understand that we live in this community, we have to be cooperation and united in some way and compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Councillor Wade?
Could I actually move an amendment?
Absolutely.
It has been sent through the offices?
Is it on the screen there? It's a new seven?
Yep. Do you want me to read it out?
Please do, yeah.
Advocates for the installation of suitable, secure bicycle parking on the Richmond Housing Estate and on all public housing sites across Yarra.
Is that acceptable to Councillor Aston, the mover?
Yes.
Is that acceptable to the secondary, Councillor Ho?
Yes.
Okay, that becomes incorporated into the motion, that yellow bit there, for those watching. Okay, we'll go back to the debate. Thank you to the mover and secondary. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Councillor Gomez?
I just want to reiterate the words spoken by the previous councillors. This has been going on for five years. I've looked through the record, I can't see any attempt in the past to try and find a solution. So I'm just, I want to thank the officers for going the, the hard yards to come up with a design that tries to compromise between the needs of bike community, of which I'm a member of. of which I'm a member of, and the local residents who need the amenity and the safety of provided by parking closer to their homes and also importantly, closer to the temple for religious purposes. I think this design basically services both communities as well as it can. And I commend this motion to my fellow councillors.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? councillor Harrison, and then followed by deputy mayor Mackenzie.
I think this, this whole debate over this brings us back to that same question that we're debating on so many different issues in Yarra, which is how we share the space so that everyone's needs are met. Whether it's Citizens Park or Elizabeth Street, we're coming across the same issue, which is that we have limited spaces and we really have to work as a community to work out how to share those spaces so that everyone's needs are met. And so this is why I think option four is the, the best way forward. It brings back some parking for residents who have quite graciously said, we accept that we're not going to have the same level of parking that we had before. They're happy to, to see that there's, some of those car parking spaces are removed so that the sightlines are there for the cyclists and that the cars can see the cyclists. That the temple has parking again, so that, that those members of the community can get to the temple. I think that's a really important thing. While we're still addressing the issues that have been raised by the Department of Transport and Planning and also the issues that have been raised in the, the safety audit. So I think this is the bottom line in Yarra, that we must share space and we've got to find compromises and this is the best compromise position.
Thank you. Deputy mayor Mackenzie.
Thank you. So about a month and a half ago, I was riding my bicycle across Hoddle Street. I was riding on a bicycle lane, crossing the road, and a car didn't see a red light and they ran into me and they hit me. And I was crazy lucky. I did say Hoddle Street, right? My bike was totaled, but somehow I wasn't hurt. It was a really quick reminder, though, of just how fast it can happen. And also that line between being fine and not fine. We are not going to be able to mitigate all those problems. People make mistakes on the road. I've probably run through a red light and I was lucky there wasn't a cyclist in front of me when I did it, you know? But I think about these matters and I go, what we can do is that we can start to set up the environment so that we can reduce when these incidents occur and how they occur. We've spoken about this a couple of times this year, so I won't hash over those points that I have raised in previous meetings. I will say, though, there have been attempts to find solutions. In fact, we recently saw a pretty good attempt to find a solution. A solution that I think could have been a Goldilocks that came out in some FOI documents just a couple of weeks ago that would have gone to our council had we not progressed in the way that we did. I would love if we could pause the process and put those out to consultation. They restore a lot of the parking, they deal with a lot of the problems that have been raised. But I also appreciate that, that is very unlikely at this point that I can convince my colleagues that that is the direction that we should go in. I'm not going to vote for this motion tonight, not because I'm not going to use that lane when it is built. I will, of course I will. I ride through Yarra and I do want things to move forward, but I'm not going to put my name to this. Respectfully, councillors, I think that we will find ourselves still talking about this in a couple of years. I don't have a whole lot of faith that we will, that we will find ourselves hearing back from the state government immediately to begin construction. And I think that we'll be left with those orange bollards and confusion about the state of the street moving forward, probably until the end of this term. If this motion does lapse, I will be putting up an alternative that we go out to consultation with the plans that were provided, well, not provided, but that would have been provided, that were done in 2024. But I also appreciate that that is unlikely, so thanks.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? councillor Wade.
Yes. I want to start by thanking staff who have now gone through several iterations of the Elizabeth Street bike lane plans and thank them for, for the work on it. I want to start with just a little bit of history. The trial was first approved two councils ago in 2019, so that was before I was elected. The trial was rolled out before I was elected and it came up a number of times last term. And we had a kind of varied number of speaking, like speakers at each of those meetings and it whittled off towards the end. We have got, you know, you can step through it, but there was a lot of consultation that did take place. In 2023, we agreed to make the lanes permanent. But importantly, we decided that we weren't going to, you know, get shovels in the ground until we had a master plan for the North Richmond precinct. Because as we discovered on the Wellington Street, South Wellington Street lanes, if there's a huge amount of construction right after you build some beautiful new bike lanes with trees and whatnot, they get damaged pretty badly when there's a whole bunch of apartment buildings going up. For me, that's still one of the biggest things that's going on at the moment is we just don't have that idea of what the precinct is going to look like. And so making any like physical changes to the space when we're still waiting on that just isn't particularly sensible. And in the meantime, I, I support the lanes staying as they are. I do support parts of option four. I think discussing the parking restrictions is something that I supported the last time around when this came to council in April. We've heard tonight that, you know, there would be value in having, for example, 15-minute drop-off zones, places for deliveries, places for Uber pickup, things like that. And that's something that I think will happen under option four, which is great. I also support a lot of what my councillor colleagues and what people in the community said tonight, which is that it's, it's a contested space, as councillor Harrison put it really well, and we need to find balance. In the meantime, though, the trial was a success under almost every metric and it dramatically increased the number of women cycling, which is something that we know across the world is an indicator of a good bike lane. If women feel safe to cycle, it means that everybody is going to feel safe to cycle. Older riders, younger riders, more people will use it. And that's why, in the meantime, until, until we have plans for the precincts, I think the lanes should stay as they are. I note that we have locals on both sides of this issue and I do encourage people to remember that when they talk to each other. This isn't an us versus them, this is like different people who are very, very proximate to the, to the street and have strong views. That said, we can't ignore users from outside of the street as well. As Andrew Foo from the VSB A said, we've got people coming from other regions to visit the temple, to visit Victoria Street. That might be car, that might be bike, that might be train. We've got commuters on foot, bike, car, who are coming through every hour of every day. We've got kids getting to school. We've got Uber Eats and food delivery drivers getting between restaurants and people's houses. Whether they come by car or by bike or by foot, we want to cater for them. And I think that's really important. But for me, safety is the most important thing and the road safety study produced with this report is revealing, even some of the things deemed low risk, I think seem scary. I will end.
Thank you, councillor Wade. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Well, there's no right of reply because the, the, the motion was amended. So we'll, we'll have a vote. All those in favour of the motion from councillor Aston and councillor Ho, please raise your hand. councillor Davies, Gomez, Ho, Jolly, Harrison, Aston against. Deputy mayor Mackenzie, councillor Wade, that is carried. Good news for those who are staying on, I'm going to have a, we'll have a little five-minute break now. That is now completed, the, the motion was passed. Thank you all for coming, whatever point of view you've got. And in five minutes' time, we'll continue with 7.2 council advisory committee's appointments. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. If you can take a seat, we're going to start now. Okay. We're on to 7.2, we've got no registrations to speak. Do we have any direct questions to councillor? Questions? Yeah, question to Brooke Holbert and Phil Delosa, far away, deputy mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if there was any update on the request around a youth council or some form of youth council that was in the original or if, if not yet.
CEO, I will answer that.
Thank you for the question. There's a paper coming to workshop next Tuesday, actually.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we're looking for a suggestion way forward. We've got, councillor Wade has got a question.
Yes, just quickly, and I think this is going to be moved as an amendment, an alternative motion in a minute. But just, can I just confirm that councillors who are interested in a particular committee but have ceded their spot because there can only be two of us on each committee, will be still consulted for the times of those meetings, so that we can still attend?
Thank you, councillor Wade. Through you, Mayor, that's a, a part of the amendment to the motion, so I can't answer it until councillors have decided on that, so.
Okay, so, so, so just for the sake of the councillors, we've got an alternative motion, I might just start with that, from councillor, deputy mayor Mackenzie. Like, just to get this moving, I'm quite happy to second it. councillor, deputy mayor Mackenzie, do you want to just explain briefly the difference between your alternative motion and the officer recommendation?
Yep, sure. So the alternative motion adds in the names in it and also it has an addition to the end which requests just that, councillor Wade, that those guest, guest councillors and who have expressed an interest and appointed councillors are consulted about days and times prior to those meetings being set. And it also notes, and this is in the report, but it notes that advisory committee papers will be available for all committees, for all councillors via our portal.
Okay. CEO, do you want to just, can you just respond to that question that was asked by councillor Mackenzie a minute ago?
Sure, Mayor, I think it was councillor Wade.
Apologised, yeah, it was.
The amendment is fine. I do want to caution councillors, though, it's actually really challenging to coordinate nine councillors' diaries. It's, challenging is a polite way to put it. So we will do our very best to accommodate everybody, but we will give priority to the councillors that have been appointed to the committees and, of course, the community members that are appointed. So I, I cannot commit that we will be able to accommodate all requests. That's just the reality. So there's a lot of committees and only a few days in the week.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to your motion? Please do now.
Thank you. So I'm really excited to get going with advisory committees. We have had a couple running in the first part of this year and I was on the active aging committee and the arts advisory committee. And I found the input and ideas really excellent. Definitely guided the way that I make decisions in this chamber. I would say to this amendment that I have put to the officer recommendation, it is about consulting. Consulting doesn't give us veto rights, it's just that first conversation. So that, you know, lots of us do have jobs outside of this and we put a lot of time into our council duties. But there have been people that we know amongst us as a group that have very firmly said that they are interested in being on a committee in the sense that they want to attend regularly. And I think making, trying to get to some sort of agreement would be useful. I appreciate that we probably won't always be able to. I put my hand up for a couple of committees that are particularly important to me and areas that I think are growing areas or areas that need particular. I mean, I think all these committees are very important, but areas that I think need particular attention in Yarra. So that is active aging, families and children, the public and community housing, which is one of our new committees, and also the family, sorry, I've said families and children, and the arts advisory committee. And I really look forward to getting cracking on those. That's all I really have to say on it.
Thank you. In seconding it, the alternative motion is just different from the original motion in that it fills in the gap in public and community housing, with councillor Mackenzie going in there. But there'll be two other councillors attending, councillor Ho and councillor Wade, and we'll, I can say absolutely certainly. I can say absolutely certainly that I'll be bending over backwards to ensure that we meet the needs of those two councillors to attend that meeting. And I'm sure it'll be the same in the other ones. The, the, later on, we'll discuss the members of the committee, but I just think it's pretty straightforward, and I think the addition at the end from councillor Mackenzie is useful and inclusive. So I'd encourage everyone to support this alternative motion. Would anyone like to speak to this motion? Councillor Gomes?
Just before we could emerge, just to put on record that I look forward to being part of the five committees I'm on, and I thank my fellow councillors for their support. The committees will be very important to get a good view of a very talented group of community members, and I'm sure it'll help all of us make better decisions in this chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else just really wants to, councillor Wade?
Just thank you, mayor, for noting councillor Ho and my interest in Public and Community Housing as fellow Public Housing Tower resident representatives. I just wanted to flag councillor Harrison for Transport and councillor Crossland for Business as well, just as special interest and get that on the public record, but noting what the CEO has said.
Thank you. And anyone else? Okay, a row of reply? Do you need, no, excuse, okay, all those in favour of the alternative motion, please raise your hand. That is councillor Harrison abstaining. No, that's unanimous. Thank you. We'll move straight along to the draft Yarra Rainbow Policy seven point three. Are there any questions to Malcolm McCall? Welcome, Malcolm. Are there any direct question, councillor Mackenzie, Deputy Mayor Mackenzie?
Hey, we're matching. I wanted to ask about the process towards getting to this draft policy, what the consultation was like, and who was targeted, and any, or targeted, but, you know, who, which specific groups were approached and how that consultation went about, and, and any further sort of targeting of cohorts in this next stage, if it is to go out to public consultation from this motion?
Thank you for the question. So, look, it was a very far extensive and far reaching engagement, so there were facilitated workshops with the existing Rainbow Advisory Committee, which is about to obviously be renewed, six week online consultation via your say Yarra. But the main, one of the biggest efforts was around targeted outreach to the LGBTQA plus community through the Pride calendar. So the Pride, that time of the year and the Saba is an excellent opportunity to be able to go out and actually meet people where they're at. There was a lot of more there, with six focus groups. I think that's been a very rich and diverse set of voices that have come into the engagement process. From here, I think it's good to note that we're seeking authority to exhibit. It's not final. And so we actually have opportunities now to go back to our existing, the known stakeholders, go to the new members of advisory committees, because we noticed that there's a lot of intersections that we need to be thinking about going forward. We've made sure to be conscious in addressing intersection, say, for example, between disability and LGBTQA community membership. So we're going to send out invitations to express opinions and seek improvements through the incumbent and the incoming advisory committee members.
Thank you. Any other questions? Or I'm looking for somebody to move the officer, councillor Wade, you willing to do that?
Yes, I have an alternate motion, which is pretty similar to the officer recommendation.
Can you just explain what it is, maybe?
Yes, it's basically just ensuring that all of our committee members who are appointed tonight specifically to the Rainbow Business Multicultural Aging and Disability Committees are sent a copy of the survey as soon as they're chosen, because they might not meet in the consultation period.
Okay, thank you. Have we got a second for that alternative, councillor, sorry, councillor Davies, apologize. Councillor Wade, would you like to move, please?
Yes, sure thing. Thank you, as always, to staff, and what excellent work has been done here. The consultation is just, like, super duper impressive, like getting out on the ground and talking to people in a whole bunch of different locations, I think is fabulous. Also, the, the report itself is really interesting. I would encourage any community members who have an interest in this space to have a look at it. I was particularly interested in the social indicators survey and some of the statistics arising from that, which I hadn't seen before. I thought it painted a really wonderful picture of our queer community, like lots of really positive characteristics in that community, including lots of volunteerism. It did also point out some sadder factors, for example, belonging and inclusion in that community was listed at significantly lower than it was for the wider Yarra community, and I think that shows why we have a need for a strategy like this still. We have seen some events recently, homophobic graffiti in the past, we've seen transphobic attacks, we've seen those things happening on the streets of Yarra where we like to think that people are safe at all times. And again, I think that shows why it's really important that we're still talking to people, that we're still trying to be better and better, because, just because you're the city of Yarra and 24% of your population may identify as LGBTQA plus, doesn't mean we're perfect. And certainly, there's still a lot to be done. So thank you very much, officers, and I really look forward to hearing what our wider community thinks.
Thank you. Councillor Davies? No worries. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, well, there's no row of reply. We'll just put that to all those in favour. That's passed unanimously. Thank you, everybody, and thank you, officers, obviously, yes, for all your hard work, and, and the whole team. Seven point four, quarterly community report, quarter four. Are there any questions to Mark Ward, the, oh, sorry, to Brooke Holbert and Mark Ward? And Dennis as well. We've got the whole team here. Deputy Mayor Mackenzie and then councillor Gomes.
Yes, I just wanted a bit more information on the place and nature actions that are in the off track category. What does that refer to?
Would one of you like to answer that, please? Don't be shy. Do you want to take it on notice?
Mayor, could I suggest that?
Just one thing, just, just, sorry, just, we're going to take that question on notice, Deputy Mayor Mackenzie. Councillor Wade?
Oh, I was just going to suggest we go load up some questions and they might be able to find it in the meantime.
Okay, yeah, well, if later in the meeting you, you find an answer, but otherwise we'll take it on notice. Next person is councillor Gomes.
I've got two questions, page one five six of the agenda. Just, can you just describe what, Dennis, sorry, question with Dennis. How are we going to be managing our sort of debt situation, given that, you know, we've got a low rate on what debt we have, but the interest we're earning on our retained cash is dropping. As of today, there was a drop in the, in the cash rate. That's my question. The second question is, the, we were forecasting to be well below the, the, the auditor general's risk level, and we're significantly above it. It's quite a large miss. Do we need to sort of address something in our forecasting, order and risk, or, or just sort of generally? It's quite a large miss.
Thank you.
Thank you for your two questions. Can you answer those two questions, please?
Thank you for the questions, through you, mayor. Firstly, in relation to my understanding is how we're managing debt. We're introducing a borrowings policy to confirm and to be transparent in a way we manage debt as per the financial sustainability strategy. Our objective is to reduce debt over the term of the loan. At this stage, given sustained high interest rates, our analysis suggests that we should maintain our course, which is no new borrowings at this stage, continue to pay down debt, and hold cash in term deposits, because the interest rates are still higher than our current interest rate borrowing level. Your second question in terms of forecasting versus actual, I'm thinking.
Yeah, so the, the auditor general adjusted underlying results table, it was, you know, it's forecasted to be quite bad. So maybe the community were quite concerned, you know, about that, and we've actually exceeded that substantially, page one five seven.
What I can say in terms of budgeting, there's always things that you can't foresee, you can't plan for. So, for example, we did, we weren't, we weren't aware that we were going to receive $1.6 million from the Commonwealth Government this year when the budget was being developed. And also through things, through the financial sustainability strategy, one of the objectives is to advocate for more grants, and we were successful in advocating for more grants to help pay for capital works during the year as well. So they're just an example of things that are not budgeted. What I can say is that the large significant part of the variances to budget are driven by timing differences. So whilst we have received a fair amount of revenue upfront, or revenue that we've received that wasn't known, those funds are committed to future expenditure. And are needed too, in terms of pay for the increased level of capital works that are coming up in year two, three, and four of the budget.
Thank you. And I think we've got an answer for councillor Mackenzie. Councillor Gomes, can you turn off your microphone, please? Councillor Mackenzie's question, you got a response?
Through you, mayor. Subject matter expert, Ms Osmond, will answer the question about place and nature, off track question.
Thank you, mayor. Councillors, the three actions that are off track are some of the built form provisions which are currently sitting with the Minister for Planning. We recently met with them and highlighted the importance of having some of those controls approved and moved forward through the process. The Gibbs Street Major Employment Precinct, councillors, we have reported on this previously, that we've had to adjust the work plan to meet other priorities such as the planning reform and the housing targets, but the team are well and truly on to that, and will be bringing that to councillors shortly. And finally, the amendments, again, with, with sort of climate based amendments are again sitting with the minister, and we will continue to advocate for them to be finalized quickly. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor Harrison?
Yeah, look, I just note that the Yarra Youth Centre in Fitzroy had 993 participants and 3,720 contacts, whereas the Richmond Youth Hub had 211 participants and 1,624 contacts. So I just wanted to ask officers to comment about the differing levels of engagement of the youth Cubs in Richmond versus Fitzroy, for starters.
Kerry McGrath, please.
Through you, mayor. I think it's basically different funding streams and different staffing capacity, and different geographic cohorts as well. I can certainly come back to you with more details around that. Richmond Youth Hub is primarily for young people on the North Richmond estate, whereas Fitzroy is not only for the Fitzroy estate, but also more broadly as well. But I can certainly come back to you with further details. There's also a lot of cross work across both hubs as well.
Thank you, Kerry. Councillor Harrison?
Just one more question. The quarterly report notes that there was an unbudgeted contribution of $150,000 from e-scooter companies. This is mentioned on page 153. Can officers just provide some more information about that?
Councillors, that would be in part the money that was provided to council for the e-scooter contribution, but there was also funds that weren't expended as a result of the e-scooter blitz.
I do. Thank you. Outstanding work by the CEO and the wider team. It's a great set of results. Quite surprising, in a good way. The community can see that over 90% of the actions in the annual plan are either completed or in progress. At the same time, council operations have generated a very significant financial surplus. We paid off $5 million long term debt, and we've squirreled away, I think, $14 million in reserves to mitigate risk and sort of allow for some strategic growth opportunities coming up. Council has been able to service our growing community with existing staff levels, and we are preparing to even, even more efficiency with a significant investment in our IT systems. And we're also doing some periodic reviews of the services provided to the community. I think it's just an outstanding result by the whole team. We're lucky to be part of it. We've come a long way from those days in 2021 when the monitor was appointed and, and the financial sustainability council was being questioned. The community should take faith that council's changing and, and for the better, and I commend this motion to my councillors.
Thank you. Councillor Austin?
I've worked in corporate services before. I know the effort it takes to pull one of these reports together every quarter, so I highly appreciate all the effort that you've gone to. I think these kinds of reports are, they can be hard reading for some people just simply because of the depth of information, the density of information, but there's a lot of really good stuff in here. And as councillor Gomes says, it, it does provide a sense of assuredness that things in council have changed from a couple of years ago, and there is a much stronger approach to financial management and various other, other activities. I think it's a great way to provide transparency to the community on a range of different things that council does in a way that's easily consumable. It's also the first quarterly report that includes some of the policy direction of this new council, which is really nice, nice to see how those things are progressing. And it tackles a range of different things, you know, highlights of the breadth of work and effort from councils, from the really tricky things like homelessness, which I know is a, you know, big issue and takes a huge amount of effort from us, through to the fun things like the citizenship ceremonies, and to the things that we all experience daily in our, in our lives, in Yarra, our streets, our, our pavements and our parks. So I think, I really look forward to seeing the next one of these. Sorry that you have to do more work, and then more work after that, and then the quarter after that. But I really look forward to see how these pan out for the new 2025, 26 financial year, first quarter.
Thank you. Anyone like to speak on this? I just want to say something. It's in relation to what Ms Osmond said, which I thought was very, very important in relation to the question from, I think, councillor Mackenzie, about the fact I've been waiting some time now for C291, the build for control, built form controls for Bridge Road, but in particular Victoria Street. And I think it's important that that was highlighted in this debate, because we all know, I think we all agree, that Victoria Street needs the most love of every street, of every part of the city of Yarra. And this, this month is exactly the third year that the DTP have been sitting on C291. There is no way government, and I speak as a lefty, but let's be honest about it, we live in a capitalist society. Anyone who believes that the solutions to Victoria Street can come from the state government and the council alone are dreaming, there'll have to be some private sector involvement, and private sector will not be involved if they don't have certainty. And I appeal, I appeal to the state government, in particular the planning minister, to fast track, well, it's actually not fast track, is to stop, to, to process ASAP this, because Victoria Street is crying out for it. And I'm going to try and step the pressure up where I can, and myself and councillor Mackenzie, deputy mayor, spoke to the minister directly on this, and it was mentioned in passing with another minister at a meeting last week in Victoria Street. That's all I want to say. Does anyone else want to speak on this matter, of the council report? Okay, would you like to exercise your row of reply, councillor Gomes? All right, we'll put that, all those in favour, quarterly report, quarter four, officer recommendation, that's passed councillor Mackenzie, that's passed unanimously. Well, thank you, officers. We'll move on to seven point five, proposed discontinuance of road abutting 7476 Rose Street, Fitzroy. Are there any questions to the council officer, Fadi Fakouri? Questions? No, no questions. I'm quite happy to move the officer recommendation then. If somebody would second it, I'd deeply appreciate it. Councillor Austin, okay, well, I'll speak to it. The, this sale, this discontinuance, proposed discontinuance of the road in Rose Street, Fitzroy, it's, it's on a site that's been purchased and it's actually got a planning permit. It's been through to VCAT as well, planning firm at PLN 240738. It's a dead end road. It's not a road for the purposes of the act, and therefore, if ever there was a good candidate for a road discontinuance, it will allow a development that's already been approved by VCAT to go ahead, and that's got to be a good thing. So on that basis, I encourage councillors to, to pass what's pretty standard discontinuance of a very, very small, you know, road, right of way in Rose Street, Fitzroy. Councillor Austin, do you want to speak in seconding that? Would anyone like to speak to this? Okay, well, and I don't have any row of reply, we'll put it to the vote, all those in favour, please raise your hand. That is passed unanimously. Seven point six, governance report, August 2025. Are there any direct questions to, there's no submitters, by the way. Any direct questions to Phil Delosa or Patrick? No questions? Would anyone like to move the officer report? Councillor Gomes? Councillor Wade, seconding? But I've got councillor Crossland seconding, so before, Harrison, I should say, before you speak, I will take the question from councillor Wade.
I'm happy to do it before you speak, if that's okay. I was just going to move that amendment, just to add that 80% line in. I was going to move it as an alt motion, but I'm happy to do it.
Would you accept that amendment?
It's just to add an extra statistic, which is that 80% of councillors have experienced threatening or intimidating behaviour, and, thanks, Kim.
Accepted. Councillor Harrison, accepting that. That's incorporated now into the motion. Councillor Gomes, you've got three minutes, starting from now.
I'd like to thank the officers for their work again. I am the MAV delegate for Yarra City Council. My, my position's always been not to put my finger on
My position's always been not to put my finger on the scale. What my fellow councillors want to be taken up to MAV is what I'll take up to MAV, so I endorse the motion.
Thank you. councillor Harrison?
I support the motions up for submission to the Municipal Association of Victoria. The motion includes developer open space contributions billed to rent developments, the state planning reforms, which echoed in notices of motion 10 and 12 that were moved by Mayor Jolly and myself respectively later in the evening, so I'm in support of this.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak to the governance report? No? Well, then we'll just put it to the vote, all those in favour, please raise your hand. That is passed unanimously. We'll move on to 7.7, Notice of Motion Number 72025, Opposition to Emergency Services and Volunteer Fund Levy. This is not a NOM, this is a response to a NOM, a notice of motion from the last council meeting in relation to the emergency services and volunteer fund levy. There's no registrations to speak. Would anyone like to ask a question to the officers? councillor Mackenzie?
Yes. So I was just wondering how much, if any, Yarra City Councils received from the state government to support administrative processes around collecting the levy?
Thank you for your question, through you, mayor. For this particular change, approximately $62,000.
So $62,000 for this change, as in it's increased the levy, but we were still collecting it before?
Yes, we're still collecting it. This $62,000 is just to assist with the change in legislation, increased customer queries, changes in systems, et cetera.
councillor Davies?
How you going? I just want to confirm some data, just to be able to, I guess, expose the increase that might be coming to residents and commercial property owners. Can you confirm that a typical apartment will have an increase of $53 and a typical house will have an increase of the levy of $145 and a typical commercial property, which traders who are listening, can you confirm that we $1,407 increase? And for industrial, $2,627 per annum? Can you just confirm those figures?
Can you just turn off your mic, please? Officers, you got that question? Thank you.
I will take that on notice, not across the specifics of every single data that you refer to. I'm happy to take that on notice.
councillor Davies, follow up?
Yeah, sure. Just to note, that is the data that I was given from the city of Yarra's CFO. I'm just gonna check the date on that, which was 23rd of May 2025. I think it'd be good to be able to confirm that information because that's gonna have a very clear impact, particularly on local businesses, local traders, but also for residents. So if you could come back and confirm that, that this is still the case. Thanks.
councillor Gomez?
I have one question. The message that we put onto the first rates notice about the fire services and volunteers' levy fund, will that be repeated on every reminder notice? I pay mine quarterly, so every quarter, will I see that at the bottom of my rates notice?
Officers? Oh, the CEO, I think he's gonna answer.
Thank you for the question, through you, mayor. The instalment reminders don't contain an itemised breakdown of rates and charges, so they're just a reminder for a payment. But we are planning to include a sentence in the instalment notices explaining the rates and charges, including the ASV. I will ensure that that is highlighted and will also include a QR so that people can seek more information about it.
Councillor Davies, and then myself.
Through you, mayor, to the CEO. Could you confirm if the council will be doing communications, any communications to local traders about the impacts of this fire levy, $1,407 if it's confirmed, so that they're aware of what's coming potentially through their related rates?
Through you, mayor. The rate notices have already gone out, councillor Davies, and they included a pretty bold statement that explains the basis of the levy and the increase, not the specific increase per notice, but the fact that it relates to a state government increase and council's just required to collect it. So I'm confident that the businesses have been made aware of that, plus there's been significant publicity about this issue, so I don't think... I think it's fair to say that there's really big and strong community awareness. The other thing I would say with regard to businesses is not all of the businesses will get the rate notices, they go to the property owners, so... and that's something, a complexity that we deal with every year.
Through you, mayor, thanks. CEO, I think to the point, I just wanted to make sure that those traders that aren't rate payers, that they are properly communicated to with this issue, because it will, obviously that will, there will potentially be a flow-on effect of this charge. So do you have any suggestions about how we might be able to deal with that?
I think you're right. I think when there's any changes, there's always a sort of a... similarly with residential properties, I mean, it's very rare for a residential landlord to pass on the rates directly to a residential tenant, but remembering that more than 50% of our community rent. I'm confident what we can do is make sure that there's information put on the front page of the website to make it super clear. We deal with, the team are really expert in dealing with inquiries regarding rates. We have a number of people at this time of year and around the instalment time that are set up with frequently asked questions. It's part of the reason why the state recently announced funding support to councillors for that because of the expected increased number of queries, so... and of course, if councillors receive any queries, please just direct them to us and we'll help anyone out.
Yeah, I'm next, and then councillor Mackenzie and then councillor Harrison. Just responding to councillor Davies, I think, I'll definitely do a video on it as well to help, and I think it might be worth looking at the Yarra News or something in there. But my question relates to the hit of this levy on the community. So we know the CFO, the chief financial officer, has told the councillors, councillor Davies correctly outlined that, that it's a $14.6 million hit collectively to residents, industrial and commercial properties, $14.6 million hit in this 19 square kilometre area that's Yarra. The second area, and this is my question, relates to the cost it's gonna cost us. You're right, the state government have unsolicitedly given a $62,700, I think it is, towards the extra costs to council. NOx council, which are slightly smaller than us financially speaking, not a lot smaller, but a bit smaller, they went and they've gone public and said it's gonna cost them $200,000. So I worked it out mathematically on the basis of the difference between their GDP or their budget, I should say, and our budget. That probably caused us about a quarter of a million and minus the $62,000 we're getting from the state government, so it's 150-odd, 180-odd hit. But you know and I don't know, I'm just guessing, you're there in the frontline. Can you explain to me where this extra expense will come from to council? And second of all, what you think it will be extra? Not including the $62,000, just forget about that, that we're getting. Is it gonna be something like NOx or will it be way more or way less? That's my question.
Thank you for the question. What I can say is that the organisation is invested already in the redevelopment of the website, it's invested in separating charges between rates and charges and the emergency services volunteer fund on the rates notice. Every year, as part of the budgeting process, there are also equitable processes and reporting processes that we undertake to acquit the former FSL. So it's part of a, there is an administration cost, time-wise, especially specifically rather, ongoing annually. This year, as I mentioned, there was a more focused investment in community engagement, as the CEO just highlighted, and also allocating some resources into the redevelopment or redesign of the rates notice. I haven't got a figure in mind, but there's some of the complexities that we're dealing with and that's what I know at this point in time.
No worries. The CEO is also gonna answer that question, I'll try to.
Through you, mayor, thanks. I don't know that we know an exact figure in terms of the cost, we'll have to, it's one of those things that we'll have to quantify once we've been through it. I think what Mr Batters is saying is that we're pretty confident with our database because of work that's gone, that's occurred in the last couple of years, so... because, for example, for the introduction of the waste charge, the separation of the waste charge, we had to do a lot of data cleansing and so we've got a much cleaner database than I suspect some other councils do at this moment. In terms of the back-of-the-envelope math that you referred to, mayor, the cost is per property rather than kind of a total valuation, so I think the closer comparator is NOx, the number of ratable property is, rather than the total GDP and the amount of budget that is collected. So I don't think it'll be as much as a quarter of a million dollars. I'll keep a close eye on it and make sure that we do seek to quantify it. The ERP certainly will make things like this much, much cleaner and simpler and faster in the future if unfortunately we have to have something like this happen again.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to councillor Harrison next because she hasn't spoken, and then councillor Mackenzie, and then councillor Davies.
So look, I'll just refer to the report, item 6A, which states, "In the event of any rates notice, is part paid whether for reasons of financial hardship or questions of principle, proportionally allocate any payment received from the rate payer towards rates and charges." So effectively, I think what this is saying is that if a resident or rate payer chooses not to pay part of their rates, i.e. being the emergency services volunteers fund component, council will have an exposure in that we will be paying, handing over proportionally what they actually remit to council. Is that correct?
Thank you for the question, through you, mayor. So yes, that's correct. So the funds received are allocated proportionally across the revenue categories and not specifically allocated to either rates or the levy.
Thank you. councillor, deputy mayor Mackenzie and then councillor Davies. councillor Davies?
Thanks, mayor. I have a two-part question and it's through you, mayor, to Kerry. Kerry, how many people in Yarra do, how many families do we have living under $128,000 per annum in Yarra?
Kerry, do you have that information?
Yeah, I just couldn't quite hear your question. Could you just maybe speak closer to the microphone?
Sorry, Kerry. I was just wondering, how many people do we have living under $128,000 a year in Yarra? Families?
Councillor, I'd need to take that on notice.
The second part is...
Follow on?
This is a question over here. With the levy, is it means-tested in any way or does everybody have to pay it? Because I'm quite aware that people who are living right on the edge right now, that's $145 a week is almost groceries for a whole week. Yeah, that's the equivalent of one week, sorry.
Thank you for the question, through you, mayor. My understanding, it's not means-tested.
So I'm quite happy to move the officer recommend, the officer report. Would anyone like to second that? No? Oh, councillor Harrison? Yes, okay. Well, I'll just speak to it, if you just put the timer on. It is a big hit. We were told it was just a name change, it's clearly not. It's a bigger and wider tax and a deeper tax. It's a $14.6 million hit according to the CFA, not including the hit to council, which is indeterminate at the moment, but, you know, it may not be as much as NOx, but it will be something. It'd probably be more than the 62K they gave us. Last night, mayors from all over Victoria met on this matter and elected a committee. Councillor Harrison and I were at a Munipon's Racecourse Conference a couple of weeks ago and we moved it, actually it was us that moved the idea of having a fighting committee of mayors and interested councillors, and it's three from rural Victorian councils, three from regional Victorian councils and three from metropolitan councils. And I was one of the ones lucky enough to be nominated for one of the three urban and I'll, you know, anything that happens out of that, I'll let all the councillors know. But, you know, there will be people unfortunately in the community who don't follow the news, who don't, you know, aren't as au fait as we are with state developments, who are gonna blame us, I've already seen it on social media. I've got my, I'm not gonna do a sun here because my rate bill, which I paid in one hit because I'm a good corporate, a good citizen of Yarra, 21% of it is going to Spring Street. You know, 21% of the rates bill is going to Spring Street and I've got it here, anyone can look at it if they want to afterwards. That's a big hit, you know, when you think about it. I mean, if there wasn't this change, I still would be paying something to Spring Street because we always pay the emergency services levy, but it's much, much bigger this year. So I just think that it's important that we pass that motion last month and we're following it up and we keep our foot in the pedal and all the ideas that councillor Davies and various other people have raised, I think are really, you know, we need to keep our, keep the pressure on because I think we're catching up with rural and regional, which is very, very rare in politics, it's usually the other way around. And come next year, I think a lot of residents in Yarra will be much more au fait about this than they are maybe this year where they're just learning when this thing comes in their letterbox, so to speak. But councillor Harrison?
Look, I think this is a, well, it definitely is a hit to everyone, whether you're a renter, whether you own the property, you're gonna be paying indirectly or directly. I'm particularly concerned about the fact that it's a very big hit for businesses. You know, we're trying to do our best to try and support businesses in Yarra and this is a big hit that they definitely don't need, so all round, I think it's just, it's actually really dishonest because we know that only $10 million is actually being spent on equipment, the trucks and things that the fire services, Victoria and the CFA actually need. So we know that $650 million is being raised through this, 14.6 from our constituents and, you know, it's, it wouldn't be as bad if you thought that it was actually going to where it is really needed, but it's not. It's plugging a black hole in the state's budget, so, you know, we have to keep fighting this, you know, that's, that's pretty much where it's at.
Thank you, councillor Harrison. councillor Gomez?
I'm the MAV delegate and at the last meeting we had, all 79 councils expressed their concern about this new levy, especially the regional councils who are seeing a major impact on their constituents. Discussions around people's mental health and potential suicides and was terrible to hear. This levy was initially introduced to sort of assist the Victorian community recover from major bushfires. I think the majority of Victorians, I certainly was one of them, supported it because we wanna help Victoria or fellow Victorians recover. Now it looks like it's morphing into a significant new tax. Worse yet, the state government is making us, sort of like the new sheriff of Nottingham, forcing us to collect this higher levy or higher tax for their benefit and at our cost. It almost feels like the game's quite rigged. We already do quite enough as state government. I mean, I've learnt, being on council, the incredible amount of cost shifting that occurs from the state government down to us. They shift our costs to us at every opportunity. So I ask people who are listening to this on the record, look at who supported the passing of this new levy at the Victorian state level and think about what they're saying to you. I commend this motion and I really support Mayor Jolly and councillor Harrison in fighting back against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have to speak to this matter? councillor, deputy mayor Mackenzie?
Yeah, I will. I will be brief on it. Thank you for this report. Look, the first part of the officer recommendation, note the report, but I don't think that we should continue to oppose it the way that we have been. Look, I think there's a real risk to councils. I reckon we have really missed that point, but the risk to councils is just what is in this report, which steps out, you know, that if people don't pay their levy, if people don't pay this part of their rates bill, that the council still has to pay up and that will come out of other services that our community relies on. That is really concerning to me, even with good rates compliance. I suppose my concern is that this opposition of it and that some of those sort of reasons as to why it is potentially cost shifting onto councils gets lost, people don't pay their levy and we are the ones that end up putting that bill anyway. I think that there's other advocacy ways that we can work around, well, not work around, but work with state and federal governments, with state government around some of cost shifting. We've heard some more of it tonight. It is an issue for us, you know, and look, there's been a couple of things raised, the levy wasn't brought in to recover from bushfires, the levy was brought in because that was a finding of the Bushfire Royal Commission, that it was, that there was significantly more money needed to be raised and the way that it was being raised previously wasn't working anymore. I don't like the idea that it goes to councils. I just wonder whether we are focusing our efforts in the wrong spot on this and if we should pivot to perhaps talking about other ways that we raise revenue. Also, taxes aren't, you know, it's, it might not be means-tested, but it's based around rates, right? And rates are a property tax and so it changes depending on how much your rates are, which is how much the value of your house is. Sure, there's all different circumstances. Sure, there's all different circumstances, um but a high-valued house, a high-valued contribution, I don't know, I crazy idea, but I think we should tax wealth in this country a bit better. Um and so this idea of a tax and transfer system and jumping up and down every time a new tax is introduced, I find really odd. It services, emergency services that save lives of people that we'll probably never meet, but that's what they do.
Uh thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Austin.
I'll make it quick. I think it's just worth looking at this in the context of all the other taxes that the Victorian government has decided to levy us with over the past year. The COVID recovery levy, the vacant property levy, a variety of others. Uh uh the upcoming increase in the congestion tax uh that will apply to all the commercial and other car parks around, which will significantly uh increase the cost of people's parking and shopping. So I do believe we should continue to oppose this tax um as well as many other taxes, because rather than continuing to take people's money, perhaps the government could look for ways to save money. Um but that's, thanks. Um but I do believe that we should continue to uh oppose this and ask the government to be more diligent in the way that they manage our services and exactly where they spend this money. Um because yes, we may save other people's lives, but those those services have been there and been funded in an existing way for a long time. And as Counselor Harrison said, there is no proof that the majority of this collected revenue will go towards funding on the ground emergency services. We've heard that it's fourteen million dollars in Yarra alone and according to Counselor Harrison, we're only looking at ten million or so going towards emergency equipment. So there you go, Yarra has paid Victoria's emergency services equipment for the year. Woo-hoo.
Um thank you. Anyway, Count, Council Davies.
Oh, thanks. Um I agree um completely with Counselor Aston there, everything um that she said. Um I think this is also gonna hurt working families, families doing it tough. I just pulled up some numbers earlier about forty percent of our families in Yarra um live under a hundred and twenty-three thousand or on on a hundred and twenty thousand, twenty-three thousand per annum. These sorts of costs are really gonna affect people who are living on the edge. That's individuals, that's families. But I also, as we just found out, almost fifteen hundred dollars to businesses, local traders per annum. Businesses that are suffering from a depressed business environment. We've got unrealized gains. We've got the ATO now charging on um owed tax. We've got the ATO garnishing, garnishing businesses. This is, just completes yet another assault on small business in this state and in city of Yarra. Um businesses are already on their knees. I just can't believe that we continue to use them as some sort of charity fund. Um and I hope that we can convince um the state government to change their direction on this.
Thank you. Um anyone else like to speak? Counselor Wade.
Uh yes, um I agree with lots of what's been said and not everything that's been said. Um there's also a few things that have been said that I think are wrong, but I'm not gonna try to be chief fact checker. I just, I wanted to put out there that I don't think everything that's been said has been perfectly accurate. Um cost shifting, I completely agree. Um I think it's a, I don't agree with councils needing to collect this levy, but that's that's where we are. I mostly agree with what Counselor Mackenzie said. I think the burden falls too heavily on rural councils and that's why they have been doing so much space, work in this space for so long. Um I think it's really important that we said that it wasn't means tested, but as Counselor Mackenzie pointed out, it's wealth tested. It's it's linked to property values. This is something that goes up and down depending on what you own and what you have. Um yes, I'm gonna vote against it, but honestly, it's it's in line with what I said last time. There are parts of how this is rolling out that I don't agree with and I don't support. Um but I also don't necessarily wholesale disagree with the E S P F itself.
Um thank you. Anyone else? Um well, I'll exercise my right of reply. I just think like this like fake leftism is pretty pathetic. I mean, you've got a government, a state government that's privatizing housing. That's essentially what they're doing on the public housing estate, that's handing over planning powers to the developer mates, that's cutting and cutting and cutting and cutting and cutting. It's these most right-wing Labour government on economic issues we've had for some time, who then all of a sudden try to claim, oh no, this is, this is, this is like, I mean, Counselor Mackenzie almost made it sound like a wealth tax. This is not an, like, I'm right up for taxing the billionaires, taxing the one percent. I'll sign up to Bernie Sanders any day of the week, tax the super billionaires to to finance the stuff that ordinary people want. But this is much more like a poll tax. This is an attack on the middle class and the upper working class, masquerading as a, as an attack on the rich. When you've got a tiny little municipality, the smallest geographically in Victoria, nineteen square kilometers, they're taking fourteen point six million dollars out of this municipality, commercial, industrial and working people. And by the way, um like it or not, a lot of people who have a large house, it's because they bought here fifty years ago, forty years ago. Their husbands probably died, the the people have moved, there's little old ladies and men living in quite large, um you know, relatively speaking, homes in Richmond and all over, all over Yarra that that are poor as anything, but they're acid-rich. And the only people that will ever see that money is is the government and their kids, uh God forbid, when when they die. But that, it's not like they're loaded and I think we have to be very, very staunch on this. If the government says, listen, we've got a black hole and we wanna tax the developer class, we wanna tax the one percent. I for one, I'm not speaking for anyone else here, I for one would sign up, I'd rejoin the Labour Party tomorrow if they did that. But look, looking after, attacking uh ordinary people, um which is what this is doing, is we can't support it. And and I'm in total solidarity with the councils and the S E S all over. And by the way, oh, sorry, my time has run out, so I'll stop. Um okay, that's it then. We have to vote on it. All those in favor of the officer recommendation, please raise your hand. Uh Davis, Gomez, Ho, Jolly, Mackenzie and, uh sorry, uh Harrison and and Aston, all those opposed. Counselor Mackenzie, Counselor Wade, that is passed. We'll move on to notices of motion. We've got five of them. Notice of motion number one, um which is coming from myself, um council priorities, it's called, and it's seconded by Counselor Ho. Thank you, officers, for that. I think there's one question that's still gonna be taken on notice, if I'm not mistaken, from the previous debate. Um so you've all seen my motion. Um what I'll, it's got a secondary, so I'll just speak to it if I can just get um uh filter, press the three minutes, please. Thank you. Um this council, I think it's safe to say, likes notices of motion. Every month, we've got a plethora of notices of motion. Now, we've actually introduced ourselves to the world with the mother of all notices of motion back in November of last year. And I think if I'm not mistaken, there was twenty-six points. You know, I I got a little bit of a telling off by the local government minister and the head of the el- the local government inspectorate. Please don't do that again. We'll let you off this time. And I used my Irish charm to try and get around it and I think that worked. We haven't been closed down yet or had a monitor put in, but we're not gonna be doing that again. Um but but we are a council that encourages all nine of us and indeed the community to come to us with ideas for notices of motion. So that is really a healthy thing. It's a good thing. I know that's probably not something that all the officers will agree with, but we think in general terms, it's a good thing. But the problem is, we don't have unlimited money and we don't have unlimited officers. So we have to prioritize, um so we can have a position that says, we think this or we think that, and then ten other things. The officers are gonna scratch their head on every Wednesday morning after council meeting and go, well, that's all grouse. Which one do we do first? And clearly, um it's the council plan and and which, which by the way, we all unanimously voted for. Specifically, that's the expansion of Richmond Library. That's what people like myself, people like the deputy mayor and many other councillors are out there. I wouldn't say daily, but weekly, really, really working hard to try and get the money for that. Um we've got the Collingwood Town Hall uh housing project, same, absolutely the same. We're working very, very hard to get that over the line. There's the two reviews, which sound like valium when you say to somebody, a review. We're doing a review of waste and we're doing a review of parking. That sounds like really dull, but I just wanna explain very quickly why that's important. Because fifty percent, almost fifty percent of our people who live in this area live in apartments like me. So we don't get, we don't get parking permits and and most of the people who live in apartments don't have council waste services. So we all bang on correctly so, how great we are with four bins, every color under the sun, we do everything and anything. None of it goes to landfill except for rubbish and yet loads and loads of people don't access that. So that review, don't get that. That review to look at from bottom up how we do waste and parking is crucial. So I think this motion, for me, is about reminding everybody, by the way, it's already in the council plan, but let's be honest about it. Nobody reads it. Very few people read the council plan, fewer than we'd like, even though we've made it a bit shorter than in the past. But the reality of it is it won't. So this is about prioritizing the key points of the council plan, which we've all agreed on. And I think um that that is the simple goal of this um notice of motion and if it's passed, I hope it'll give greater clarity. Um thank you. Counselor Ho, seconding.
Uh uh thank you, officer, and I do support this. Stephen Jolly, your policy.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ho. Anyone else like to speak? Uh Counselor Gomez.
I'll be brief. Um overwhelmingly, the residents in Nichols Ward that I speak to a lot uh are very much, were very much supportive for what we tried to do with the original um priorities that came through that, you know, that so-called omnibus norm. It was painful for all those, painful for officers, painful for councillors, but the results were exceedingly well-received by the community. I think this continues that that approach where we try and always back the council plan, uh which we all unanimously voted for and the budget, which m- most of us voted for, um to basically focus on the things that are going to matter. I know for 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 uh for 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 feedback that people are looking forward to a rethink of our curbside parking strategy, in particular the issue about um visitor per- parking permits. And I know that many people in Nichols Ward and people have heard from Curtain Ward and parts of um Yarra Ben Ward are looking for us to try and address the situation where they say, why is it that the the waste levy that they pay for is based on the on the value of their house when we all know that the service is equally costed, whether you pick it up from a house that's worth a hundred thousand dollars or a house that's worth ten million dollars? So they're asking for that. So I applaud this um approach by um by the mayor and I support it and endorse it to everyone else.
Uh thank you, Counselor Gomez. Anyone else like to speak in this matter? Uh Counselor Mackenzie.
Um thank you and thank you for this motion, Mayor. Uh I'm really proud of what this council has achieved this year and um and broadly supportive of its direction. We did a lot of work on the council plan and this outlines and highlights some of um some of the important parts in our plan. Um I will note, though, that it is um, it doesn't do a whole lot. It doesn't call for a report um because it doesn't need to call for a report because it doesn't uh redirect any services or have any expenditure. I guess that's a good thing, but at the same time, it's, it is more a statement. Um uh I know it will get up and I I suppose you go, well, it's a statement. Why wouldn't you just wave it through? Um clause two outlines, sorry, clause one outlines a lot of that these priorities that all sit in our plan, a plan that I voted for and um many of them came from a norm in November that I also voted for. Um but clause two, so clause two outlines some of our advocacy priorities. And a- again, our advocacy priorities are set out in our annual action plan and in our advocacy um action plan. The mayor and I regularly meet with state and federal um representatives and advocate for the city of Yarra. And I think we've been really successful in a range of areas. Um but if I had to put on my list what my sort of top two contentions with the state government at the moment were, I probably wouldn't be putting on the emergency services volunteer levy, um which is up there. I also think the way it's drafted completely misses the point. As I mentioned before, the risk for councils is about the collection of the levy and potential non-compliance and the costs that that would have on us. Um the comment about frontline workers doesn't have any supporting evidence to it. This revenue goes directly to the services. That's been made abundantly clear by the state. In fact, I think that there were some times where it was a bit unclear and amendments made um in Parliament that clarified that. Um also, you know, we are not the Parliament. There've been no announcements, there's no evidence provided that the levy results in a cut to frontline fire services or that these are happening at the same time. Um the second point on public housing, Yarra has taken a strong, appropriate position on opposition to the demolition, as we should, but that came with caveats. It was an opposition until and unless transparent, clear evidence is provided that demolition is the only viable option. I kind of go, you know, it's not as simple as don't pull down the towers and why would our first thing on the advocacy, you know, if we were restating them, not just either recall that motion? Or, you know, why don't we call on the state government to unadversely make clear that they will never or never have an intention to sell the land that these towers sit on? Or call for things, new things that have come up since that motion was passed by our last council. Um a large part of my work um outside of council is on housing. Twenty-one seconds, um is on housing policy and I will continue to fight um for more public and social housing in the city of Yarra. I know that a lot of my colleagues feel very strongly about. I'm not gonna play into the igniting anxiety and fear and misinformation or using vulnerable people as props in political campaigning, which unfortunately some political parties in our state choose to do. Um I'm not voting for this um because I'm against the priorities of clause one, but I'm, but I'm not voting, sorry, I'm not, I'm not gonna vote against it on the, on the, those reasons, but I'm voting against it because it would indicate support for statements that is drafted, either miss the mark or incorrect.
Um thank you, Counselor Mackenzie. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Uh Counselor Wade.
Uh yes, again, I agree with a lot of what Counselor Mackenzie said, though I don't agree on the public housing stuff as as you might expect and and agree with the mayor's, closer to the mayor's statements on that, though I agree with bits and pieces. Uh I will be voting against this, even though I agree with large chunks of it. I think the curbside and parking strategy and the waste and recycling strategy are priorities. I'm really glad that we're all on the same page about that. Um within those, what the most important thing is, I think there's probably still some contention. Um but as a general rule, I I don't agree with every single thing in this motion. I don't agree with the prioritization in this motion. Um so I will just be voting against it, but I don't need to make a big deal of it, so I'm gonna stop.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Um I'll exercise my right of um reply. Um with the cuts, that's just simply wrong. I mean, the the fire ser- uh Fire Rescue Victoria, a hundred and fourteen million dollar hit over the last two years. Um the state government are now saying, no, 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 we're not gonna cut anymore. All this money will go into fire services. Um you've got the same, not as much of a cut, but a million, a multi-million dollar cut to triple zero, S E S. Um and those, those, like, I'll literally distribute those figures to all councillors and interested staff tomorrow morning. In terms of the state government's housing policy and a fear campaign, the reason people are fearful is because the state government are saying they gotta knock down the terrace. I mean, Dan Andrews has told the world, it was accepted by, like, after he resigned seven days later by the state government, that they've got a policy of knocking down the terrace and they have not um properly consulted with residents. We hear from Counselor Ho that lots and lots of the um residents in North Richmond um have not received information in the language, in their language, about what the state government is is uh is is doing. So often, the whistleblower, people like us, and to be fair, you like, you know, me and the state member fight a lot, but we're one on this one, often get blamed for just saying what's happening. And that's what we're doing. And, oh, no, no, you're just fear mongering the poor residents. Well, if you knock down the towers, you don't guarantee you're gonna replace public housing with public housing, um but it'll be social housing and private and it'll be on the land. And yeah, I agree with the deputy mayor, we should ask that they don't, but the whole point of it is to build on the land. They wouldn't be doing this if they, if they, because they wanna get their hands on that juicy real estate. So I think that um uh the point of that second half of the motion is to say, we're gonna have a sophisticated approach to the government. Where they do the right thing, we'll work with them. We want their money for Richmond Library, for example. Where they do the wrong thing, we're not afraid to stand up to them. I think that's really important and I hope this motion is passed. My time has run out now. We have to vote on that. All those in favor of not norm one, please raise your hand. Davies, Gomez, Ho, Jolly, Harrison and Aston, those opposed. Deputy Mayor Mackenzie and Counselor Wade, that is carried. We'll move on to um eight point two, uh norm in relation to to the AFL. It's obviously moved by Counselor um Davies. Just sorry, Dave, Counselor, just let me just get this up on my screen because I am, um because I was talking so much, it froze on me. Um there's a lesson in that. Um Counselor Davies, uh your motion um is on the screen, hopefully, Counsel, uh staff, please. Um in relation to the AFL, um have we got a second for that? Um we've got two amendments. Counselor Wade's got an amendment, um which you've seen. I've got an amendment in relation to community consultation, which um but what I would suggest, if we had a second, we'd do Counselor Wade's one first and then do mine second. Oh, I do, I actually apologize especially to you, Christine, but we have got one registration to speak. Christine Maynard, please come to the front and you've got uh three minutes. I do apologize. I'm a very brave man to forget Christine Maynard, mate, I'm telling you that.
Okay, so um I'm aware that this is yours, Andrew. I just have a couple of things to say in relation to this motion. Um on speaking to a sergeant from Richmond. On speaking to a sergeant from Richmond Police Station today, they're not aware of this and have rather large concerns. As a licensed security guard, I deal with football regularly. So I'm at, was it Geelong on the weekend with some lovely underage drinkers that had fake IDs. I regularly deal with drugs and alcohol at my workplace. I think this is a good idea in theory, but not much thought has gone into it. Now, my main question is who's paying for it? Okay, so we've got, you're aware of the overflowing bins page of Yarra, and I love seeing Swan Street look like a dog's breakfast. So Saturday night, it was my son's birthday and I was down there about 6:30 and there was crap everywhere from one another place to the other. I was at the football with St Kilda versus Richmond and there was 41,000 people there. And so when we get 80, 90,000 people regularly down at Swan Street, nothing's changed. Okay? So I have an enormous concern about the cost. Now, the estimation from the sergeant with everything considered is probably a couple hundred thousand dollars. And yes, the businesses would make loads of money, but the ones that are doing the wrong thing every weekend, no one's bothered to go down and speak to. And I'm quite happy to put it on record which ones they are. If you look at the photos on the overflowing bins page, you will see every week they are the same. I have noticed a couple of weeks ago that the bins were picked up, maybe the Saturday night, because I walked my dogs down on Sunday and I was spewing that I didn't stop the night before in my car on my way back from work. Oh, sorry, my bicycle, not that I have a car. So I have a huge concern about your theory and what your thought process was before you came up with this idea. And I'll go back to when Richmond won the grand final and I had to fly to Sydney for the NRL grand final. So I didn't go to it and I wouldn't take my family down there anyway. But, you know, we had people jumping on cars and that sort of thing. So, yeah, it's a great idea, but the people that were inviting into the suburb couldn't care less about what goes on in this suburb. And then it's the ratepayers that foot the bill for the issues that something like this would create. And let's think about the resources that are being used that the police don't have in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. So that was the only submitter. So we'll move back to the to the norm, the notice of motion number two, AFL Football Finals Festival. We've got a mover, councillor Davies. I'll give you a chance to speak in a second, just need to get a second. councillor Wade and I will amend, propose, I should say, propose amendments. So can we get a second to that?
For the purposes of having an amendment, I'll second it.
Thank you councillor Davies. Sorry councillor Gomez, I'm just tired, I apologise. So before you speak, can I ask you to look at councillor Wade's amendment and let me know if you if you and councillor Gomez agree to it? So it's there on the screen and it, councillor Wade, do you want us to just briefly explain what it is?
It basically just introduces the word AFLW everywhere where the word AFL is, and it also specifies that the AFL Grand Final Public Holiday, it's not called AFL Public Holiday, so that's just penantic, but it's mainly introducing AFLW.
councillor Davies, happy with that?
Yes.
councillor Gomez?
Yes.
All right, that's incorporated into the motion. My one is basically community consultation. So if all of the above, and I've got, I think councillor Harrison's going to respond, if all of the above receive positive community feedback and subject to prioritisation, the goals of the council plan, et cetera, et cetera, any proposals on this matter would go to community consultation with Richmond residents and businesses, à la Fitzroy Festival or Brunswick Street Festival, for example. So that's my amendment. And so councillor Davies and Gomez, can you please, will you accept it or not? Of course.
Yep. In terms of your Brunswick Street Festival, this is a clause that you have in in that?
No, it's not in the, Brunswick Street Festival's not in that motion.
Right, okay.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's not saying that we have to do Brunswick Street Festival first and then this, it's saying the council plan is important and the 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 community consultation is absolutely crucial.
Yep, I accept that.
With residents and businesses, councillor Gomez, will you accept that?
Yes.
Okay, so now we have a substantive motion with two amendments both accepted by the mover and seconder, and I'm going to hand over to councillor Davies, give him his three minutes, starting, sorry, sorry, councillor Wade, a question?
Sorry, do you mind if I just ask a question before we go into debate and so that staff don't get dragged into that? I just wanted to check, I think it's a governance question, but through you, mayor. Notice of motion, I'm conscious that the general business motions have that cap of $1,000 or a certain amount of staff time. Do notice of motion, how how do they work? Like, because obviously, as as the mayor said, we're putting through quite a few of them and I'd just like to understand that a bit better before we get to the next series.
Can I get a response from either the CEO or Phil Delosa, please?
Thank you councillor Wade, through you, mayor. Notice of motion have two conditions. So one, whether it impacts the levels of council service or commits council to expenditure that's not included in the budget. So they're the conditions that that apply to notice of motion. And general business have a condition that anything over $1,000 can't be accepted as general business.
councillor Wade?
Yes, that's helpful, thank you, Mr Delosa. So that means that, like, to the extent any of these reports impact the budget, they would have to be, like, reined in, like, they're they're only what we can do within what we've already approved as budget. Sorry, I appreciate that's a slightly difficult question, but I think that's what the requirements are.
If this notice of motion went through, the thinking, as amended, a report would come back providing council all those details around budget, capacity, council plan, all those sort of things. So so that's what would be expected from the report.
Thank you councillor Wade.
I was just going to ask one more question, which is the December 2025 timeline. So we're obviously going to miss this football final season and it's for the following football final season. Is the is the December 2025 timing critical, given there should be like another 10 month lead time after that?
Yep, sure.
Yeah, sorry, I'll ask that to councillor Davies and then I'll, yep.
Yeah, and you'll still get your three minutes, so this is on top of, you're getting a bonus here, yeah.
Great. Yeah, just just for some clarity here, this is a report to for us to then contemplate, to be able to look at. It's also to be considered as part of the 2627 financial year. So in terms of if we, as a council group, were to agree based on the report recommendations, we found that it made sense from this report, which would come in on December, that'd give us enough time to then deliberate over it and talk, you know, with officers and so on. It would then be something to be actioned into the 2627 budget, not in this financial year budget, just for clarity. So it's, yep. Does that answer your question?
Pretty much. One follow up, if that's okay. I mean, December 2025 doesn't seem too soon, but I know the Glittle one is March 2026. I was just wondering if if staff, if staff could comment on the December 2025 timing and if that's okay, because we have, we have got a stellar backlog.
I've got, I think the CEO is going to respond to councillor Wade's question.
Through you, mayor, we will do, you know, in the event the council's supported this, we'll do everything we can, as we have, to meet the timeframe, but this is not in the current council work plan or in the council plan. And so it's in addition to, December's really tight, quite honestly, but we will do everything we can to try to support council's decision.
Wade, question?
councillor Davies, would you be open to an amendment just to shift it back to, say, say March as well? I feel like there's plenty of time after that.
councillor Davies?
Probably have a question through you, mayor, to the CEO, is in terms of actioning an event like this and obviously making it part of the 2627 financial, financial year, what kind of lead time would you need to action it, noting that it's it's a this time next year timeline? Would March give you sufficient time if the council was to make a decision in March, let's say, a March session?
CEO?
Through you, mayor, thank you for the question. I think I'll answer it a bit indirectly, which is to say that one of the items in this year's council's work plan, adopted work plan, relates to the Brunswick Street Festival and it's a year of due diligence before council makes a decision about whether or not it wants to proceed. I think there are parallels here, so I don't know, I mean, I think Christine Maynard makes some good points, certainly Vicpol, the transport agencies, all of those. All of the related parties that have an interest in this precinct. I think it's highly unlikely they'll give us advice by December, quite honestly. I I think it's unrealistic to think that even if council thought this was the best idea in the world, that it would get up by next year. In the event that this was the best idea ever and everybody loved it, there's a whole lot of procurement that would have to occur, you know, security, all those kinds of things. And that's that's a 12 month process. So you're talking, it's 2025, you're probably talking 2027 anyway, quite frankly. So on that basis, I think that it could wait as suggested, but we are good public servants, so we'll do what council resolves.
Okay, so there's a direct question from councillor Wade to councillor Davies. You don't have to answer it, obviously, but do you want to, like, which basically push it back till March 2026? That was the proposal from councillor Davies.
Should we make a little bit halfway and say February? Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we're governance, you've got that, mayor, you're way ahead of me. Well done. You got 25 and, yeah, so just, you've still got December 25 in there, but you know that. councillor Gomez, do you agree with that change?
I do.
Okay, so we'll now go back to the substantive motion. It's been amended twice, both of the amendments have been accepted. In fact, it's been amended three times now. councillor Davies, your three minutes starts as soon as you begin to speak.
Thanks, mayor. Ask anybody about Richmond and they'll say Richmond is football. And I think that's why this is a bit of a no brainer. We're already the official destination, we already have the people, we already have the football fans, they're already here. So let's build the infrastructure around it, let's create a safer environment, a cleaner environment and a better organised Richmond festival and a celebration of football. And the kind of celebration is for all ages. It's kids and families, all day events, and hopefully share the love a little bit around Richmond. It's about also dealing with and managing post-game revelers. As I just said, it is about activities across Richmond throughout the football festival season, but also culminating into the grand final day on Swan Street with the Swan Street Festival. Big screens, big footy celebrations, an array of footy activities and entertainment and a big celebration. This is, this is a celebration of not only football, but of our local restaurants, shops, pubs and bars, something that's going to boost our local businesses, boost our local economy and bring our community together. As we just said, we ideally like to do it in 2026, let's see what we can do, but we need the time to build great partnerships and plan for a great festival and also plan for traffic and people management. In terms of how we pay for it, well, we need to become a more enterprising city of Yarra. And so the first thing we do is look at how we can streamline the city of Yarra's compliance process to make this festival simple, affordable and beneficial to both the community and participating local traders. That means we engage with large players like the AFL and like minded potential partners, not only developing the festival, but also funding the festival. We access grants to source, for funding sources. We tap into sponsorship and opportunities to both fund and promote the festival. We source experienced event organiser to run the festival in a revenue positive mindset. This is how we build a viable and sustainable annual festival for years to come. And I just want to add that the state minister for small business, who we met last week, she said this is a fantastic idea to reactivate our local shopping strips. And I happen to agree with her, not on everything, but certainly on this, because the minister and I know it's time for us to reactivate our shopping strips, give our businesses, our local traders the best chance of survival. And it's time for Richmond to have its fair share of festivals. And really, what's the better way to do that than just with a footy festival? I commit this to the floor.
Thank you councillor Davies. councillor Gomez, did you want to speak?
Just quickly, mayor, I was supporting councillor Davies' right to put this up for discussion. I'm the member, I'm the councillor for Fitzroy North, so I don't have a lot of specific knowledge about Richmond. I understand that there is a difference of opinion, both with residents as to whether they should have it or not, but I also remember the joy of when Richmond won their first grand final for many years. So I will take the advice of officers, in particular, the police. I've met with Jim Scanlon as well, he's a fine and upstanding member of the police looking after us. And I think what they say, whenever they can say it, will certainly guide my endorsement of this idea or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like, I'll take it to the mover and seconder, councillor Harrison?
Look, I'd just like to thank everyone for the amendments put forward. I think it's really important that we don't rush into a major event like this. And I think it's really, really important that we get feedback from all sectors about this idea and that we don't rush into this process. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? councillor Wade and then councillor Aston?
Yes. So to quote councillor Jolly, sorry, mayor Jolly, as a general rule, I like to be able to support reports where I feel like they're trying to, in good faith, find some outcome. And so on on this occasion, I'm going to support this report. I will say, I'm supporting this report on the condition that it doesn't go outside of what we've got currently budgeted, which obviously this wasn't budgeted, so that means it'd have to be pretty skinny, like, we sent some emails, we raised it in existing meetings, but we don't, like, go to town. That's that's the basis on which I'm supporting this, is that it's not over and above what is in the budget we passed two months ago. I think more celebrations of AFL and AFLW, great. I I'm really impressed by the work our economic development team, I think it is, has done with the local football clubs, so Richmond, Collingwood and I was going to say Fitzroy, but I guess I mean Brisbane. In recent years, we've really got a partnership there now and we've run some really exciting events. I'm still a little bit surprised that, like, big AFL and AFLW teams are interested in local council, but it's really nice that they know their roots are here and that they are engaging with us. And so we do have some of those existing relationships. The biggest thing, I think, for me, that I question, obviously, I want to hear what all of these people have to say, and then the community, if we get to A, as has been proposed, is that I'm not 100% sure it's needed. Like, when Richmond win, Richmond pumps. When Collingwood win, Smith Street is like full of, like, people for days. These things kind of happen quite naturally. I'm kind of glad we've got another football season that will pass before this happens and we'll get to see that, we'll get to see that, the lows and the highs of that for our businesses, our residents, our streets. I do, I haven't amended it because I appreciate this is a Richmond motion, but I'm not entirely sure that Swan Street needs additional activation. I feel like if we were going to put something somewhere to, you know, try to generate a bit more trade, we'd probably do it on Bridge, like, we've got a lot going on for Victoria Street now. Swan Street, by measures that we saw in our last briefing, is doing really well, vacancy rate is low, they are making money. And so, you know, Bridge is at the other end of the MCGA. So that's a discussion that can be had, but that's that's what I'm thinking and I'm supporting it on that basis.
Thank you. councillor Aston?
Yeah, I'll be supporting this. I'm keen to see what kind of opportunities there are to look at different ways to help activate different parts of our city in ways that sort of fit the vibe of those particular neighbourhoods. And like Andrew said, you know, Richmond is a really, it's a it's a footyhood. I do agree with a lot of the points that councillor Wade raised, but I do think it's worthwhile investigating. However, I'm only supporting it because of amendment E, in the sense that it will go to community consultation. We have made a big song and dance and a proper one in this council of ensuring that we consult with the community whenever we are planning to do something big or that has a significant effect on them. And this definitely meets that criteria. So I'll be interested to see what comes to us and whether we are able to pursue anything in this direction pending. what comes to us and whether we are able to pursue anything in this direction pending community sentiment.
Thank you, councillor Ho.
I do show support this initiative, Andrew, but it's not as simple as I'd used to be. I know for the fact that Yartram will not close more, no other street besides St Kilda, Sydney Road and Victoria Street. And we're going to have a very difficult time with Yartram closing the road for this festival. But I do show support your initiative, but there's a lot of complicated with road closure, with transport and commuter around the main tram network. And that's why I heard from the Yartram, they want sponsor and it will costly, it will be a hundred thousand beyond that to close the street. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. I'll go next. Long, 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 long time ago, I used to live in Richmond in the 1990s. And then I haven't really sort of been based here that much since I became the mayor. And as I walk around the streets, Monday to Friday, at Bridge Road and all the rest of it, what I've really reminded me is that people in Richmond are really toey. They have an opinion on frigging everything. And in my ward, they're much more polite. Oh, would councillor, would you think about this? In Richmond, even when they like you, they bail you up, you think you're going to get bashed. And they've got an opinion. And I think that, and the lesson that I've learned as mayor from Charlotte Street and from Elizabeth Street, is the punters hate being ignored. They hate no consultation. And I've had quite a bit of feedback over the last week, since the article in the Herald Sun, and some of it's been positive, a lot of it's been, like, what the fuck, what's this? Yeah, excuse, sorry, I shouldn't say that. So what, I'm quoting other people here. What, what, what are you doing here, blah, blah, blah? People are a little bit worried that they're reading about it in the paper. I just think that with this and with any idea, we need to bring the community with us. Like, I'm going to sound like I'm big nine on myself, but I will for a second. With the Brunswick Street Festival, first of all, I took it to the election, then organised a massive meeting with the Fitzroy Residents' Association. It was over 100 people. I think councillor Gomes was there, where we debated it out. We've had two meetings that staff have run, that I've just attended, councillor Mackenzie, I think was at the first one, where we discussed it with a staff run meeting with all the traders on Brunswick Street. The other one was only a fortnight ago. And it's been in all the newspapers, I've done videos on it, spoken to the punters, everybody's got an opinion on it. Because a festival, if done badly, can really cock up. And I'll give you one example, Johnson Street Spanish Festival recently, all the traders are telling us that because of the way it's run, you know, the officers will back me up on this, that because of the fact that they have, for example, an alcohol concession on site that they give them on the street, all the pubs in the area lose money when the Latin American or Spanish festival is on. Like, they literally are, like, pulling their hair out. And I know the officers are moving on that. So I think that when we're doing something, it's really, really good to bring the community with us and not just jump them. And that's why I moved the amendment, which I'm really thankful the councillor Davies and Gomes accepted, to have the community consultation. It's not to slow it down, it's because you get a better product. Because what I think is none of us nine here, or even the officers, I've never seen something that's happened that we've just done on our own, even with the officer's support, that wouldn't have been better if we'd brought the community with us. They want to have a say, and by the way, I mean the businesses as well. And that's why I think it's, it's a good motion, but it's now better that the two, the three, actually, the three amendments have been put into it. I've got 20 seconds left, I'll stop talking. Anyone else want to say something? Hasn't spoken. There's no right of reply because the motion's been amended. So therefore, we'll go to vote. All those in favour of councillor Davies and Gomes' motion, please raise your hand. That has passed unanimously. Very good. We move on to 8.3, statutory planning reforms. Councillor Harrison is moving that notice of motion. Have you got a seconder, councillor Austin? We've got it on the screen. Are there any, there's no submitters. Are there any questions to councillor Harrison before? No? Okay, three minutes, councillor begins now.
So this is really detailed, there's lots of stuff in there. A lot of things, actually, that have been referred to in various contexts this evening. For example, the planning scheme amendments that, as Mayor Jolly mentioned, has been languishing for three years on the minister's desk. So really, this is all about what's happening in planning right now. We've had reforms announced in February, we've got talk of 44,000 additional housing units across the municipality by 2050. What that really means is an almost doubling of our population. This is something that potentially means that there will be planning scheme changes. We don't know, we don't have a capacity model. The department has not released that to our offices, even though they've requested it. We also have this Development Facilitation Programme track, which, you know, an increasing number of applications are coming through. I think we received three more that have come through that were advised to us just this afternoon. And these applications are coming at us thick and fast with our officers having very limited time to review those, no funding to do that. And the, the community itself is actually got very limited opportunity to actually provide feedback into these applications. And we, you know, in some instances, the minister was actually making a decision before councillors even formed a position on the application. So I think councillor, sorry, deputy mayor Sarah Mackenzie mentioned earlier that some of these motions that are being put forward tonight as notices of motion are actually not really involving a report or a budget or anything. They're actually about making a statement. And this is definitely a statement. It's about saying that in Yarra, we actually do support more housing, we understand that there needs to be more housing, but this is something that the state government and the Department of Transport and Planning needs to work with us on. And ultimately, the people in Yarra that are the experts on local planning are our own planners, and they should be listened to and they should be in the room when some of these pre-planning meetings are happening, et cetera, et cetera. So there's lots of detail in there, but it's actually about us being involved in decisions that affect our municipality. And, you know, so I, I really want to acknowledge the officers who've contributed to preparing this because it actually really affects them. And so I've been really pleased with the feedback that they have provided on this, so that we can actually put forward a position to say, you know, guys, you need to do better on this and work with us, not against us.
Thank you. Councillor Austin, seconding?
I want to congratulate Sharon and the officers on putting together a really comprehensive norm that addresses a number of serious concerns that do deeply affect everyone across Yarra in some way, shape or form, either directly or indirectly. I will admit that I was quite shocked at the way in which the state government does certain things around planning that really do shortchange councils all across the state, but particularly us, because they're the ones that I look at. And I think the, the experience with the recent one at, what, 675, 673 Victoria Street was really, really eye opening about just how much the planning system is not geared towards our favour and how we are shortchanged in so many ways. I mean, there's a number of other things going on. But I, I think the advantage of this norm is that it pulls together a very clear advocacy position around our planning concerns, that we haven't necessarily pulled together in a comprehensive, sort of centralised place before. We have addressed these in various bits and bobs, but this really pulls everything together in, in a comprehensive, consolidated way. And really sort of raises the profile of issues that I think a lot of people don't have visibility of. Simple things like the fact that it costs us money to go through state, the DTP applications and, you know, we get nothing back for that. And I've seen the work that the officers do on that. I know the effort that they go to. I know the expense that that has on us. And it's, frankly, it's very unfair. Not necessarily saying that anything on that is going to change anytime soon, but it's definitely worth us having a consistent position on and advocating for that. There's a range of other things, I think, that are really important in here that Sharon's and the officers have put together. But I think most importantly for me is ensuring that developer contributions for infrastructure and open space are made to the municipality where development occurs. Given that we are going to have a population explosion, much of that will be apartments where large scale developers will benefit financially and we need to make sure that the community benefits as well.
Thank you. Anyone like to speak to this motion? Councillor Mackenzie, councillor Gomes?
Just really quickly, thank you councillor Harrison for drafting this motion. I think it makes a lot of sense, it pulls it all into one spot, and it makes a position on things that we've had lots of discussions about, but you're right, that we haven't pulled in to a document out very well. The mayor and I, as I said before, do meet with members of parliament and, like, in sort of consistent messaging, and it's not just coming from Yarra, it's coming from all councils, but particularly from us, is that we are not showing any signs that we are not willing and ready to work together. So let's not start from that starting base. And look, there are some things that I think, you know, we've talked about, are concerns. And what I like about this norm is the elements of it that go to, yeah, really highlighting that we are ready and we are, I don't think the Victoria Street was very eye opening in the sense that I don't think that was a roomful of people who were anti any change. And I think that came through quite strongly. They want and are ready for more people to live here. It's just the way we go about it. We can have a better outcome if we work together. There may be times where, you know, somebody pulls the lever, but the first step of at least being involved in it will give us better outcomes as well as show us a little bit more respect.
Thank you. Councillor Gomes?
Just very quickly, again, at the MAV, all the metropolitan councils share the same view that with the planning reforms, we're working against the interests of their residents and working against the, and overworking or under-respecting the planning officers in all those councils. I make the comment that I saw, close up, because I went with councillor Harrison to visit some of the people affected by the recent development at 675 Victoria Street in Richmond, I saw the impact of what happens when the state government rips away the planning powers that we ordinarily would have exercised to come up with a solution that worked for everyone. I saw a lack of consultation with the community. I saw a fast-tracking and frankly, a bad design. So I'm amazed at, at the work that councillor Harrison and the officers put in. As councillor Harrison's put in, as I said, the officers did it without any sort of financial contribution coming back to us, just to try and help those residents in Richmond manage a situation that was out of their control and pretty much out of our control as well. I endorse this motion.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Councillor Davies?
Just briefly, I just want to say thanks to councillor Harrison for leading the charge on this. Planning is going to be a big focus of the council going forward because it's a big focus for our community. So thanks councillor Harrison for putting this together and working with the officers. Thanks to the officers. And yeah, I'll be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Wade?
Here, here. Very good motion. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you councillor Wade. Okay, right of reply, do you want to exercise it?
The only thing I'd say is that this is really a two-way street. We need infrastructure, we need all the things that go with the development that the government wants to, you know, impose on us, and they really need to work with us. That's really the final thing I want to say on that.
Thank you. We put it to the vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That has passed unanimously. Thank you. We move on to 8.4, notice of motion number 13, road renewals from councillor Wade. We've got it on the screen in a second. Do you have a seconder? Councillor Davies?
Can I foreshadow a amendment?
Yes, you can. Do it now, do it now. Yeah, we'll ask councillor Wade and Davies if they accept it or not. Have you got it on screen or not?
Is it the one that's listed under the mayor's name? That just might help governance find it.
Yeah, but that was incorrect, it's not in my name. But, but yes, it is the one. I've got it in front of me, you're quite right, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so that one in yellow, councillor Wade is fine with that. Councillor Davies, are you fine with that?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. So that becomes part of the substantive motion. So on that basis, councillor Wade, your three minutes start now, please.
Yes, so where this was kind of councillor Davies and I have been discussing in Cremona and Collingwood in particular, but I think almost every ward, certainly Abbotsford, Langridge, North Richmond, Melba and Langridge, have, have these really skinny, skinny footpaths that when we do road renewals, we renew the skinny, skinny footpath exactly how it was. When, I think all of us know, the skinny, skinny footpath isn't very usable as a human walking, as a place to put a bin, as a human walking when somebody has used it as a place to put a bin, if you're in a wheelchair or if you have a pram, it's absolutely unnavigable. So the idea that we were hoping to float, which I think is still done through this version of this motion, is to have a discussion about where you've got less than eight metres between property lines, which as I've, I've been describing tonight as a skinny, skinny street, that we consider potentially doing them a little bit different when they come back. I initially didn't think that this was necessarily a curbside and parking strategy thing because it's not really parking, but I guess the skinny footpath is curb as well. So that's why I think it's fine to do as part of that process. And obviously, we've got plenty of reports coming. But the idea is to try to make things better when we're spending money renewing them and to try to make them as accessible as possible and like nice places for people. And we, we had some examples of both, where, where councils done a really great job and other jobs where councils done a very good job of renewing, but, but maybe we could have had a better design. So I'm looking forward to discussing this in the upcoming parking and curbside strategy workshops.
Thank you. Councillor Davies?
Yeah, just to sort of lead on from councillor Wade, I think it might have even come up in a committee, one of the transport committees, when we're talking about fun things like procurement. But yeah, look, our laneways are particularly special in Melbourne and in Yarra. Our heritage laneways in particular, that they're a defining part of, a defining feature of our city, as councillor Wade just defined. They've got a lot of historical significance which needs to be preserved. But we also, we also need to, we can also take the opportunity to use this step of renewal to improve access, disability access, increase our multipurpose use, which means pedestrian and car access. It's about sustainability, but also maybe tapping into some of the, the solutions for drainage at the same time that we may or may not need to, to look at. But again, we, we want to make sure that the historical value of these laneways, which we hold very dearly, is something that many of us hold dearly in our hearts, as, as part of our identity, is maintained. But it's just to make sure that it's renewing, but also improving. And I think that's really the, the basis to this motion. And hopefully, we can get ratepayers' money spent a little bit more effectively with some design considerations upfront.
Councillor Davies, thank you for that. Anyone else want to speak? Councillor Gomes?
I just wanted to sort of outline my amendment, just to say basically that all the discussion tonight has been about how we've unanimously supported the council plan and the vast majority of us supported the budget. And that the work we do needs to be part of that. And the curbside and parking strategy is going to be a big focus for, for us. And I think this can, should fit within that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this? No, there's no right of reply because the motion's been amended. All those in favour of this motion, please raise your hand. That has passed unanimously. Moving on to 8.5, the Dell Street Market. Councillor Davies, obviously. Have we got a seconder for that? Okay. Well, I'll, I'll second it so it can be discussed on the basis that, so we've got, we've got the motion there. Are there any amendments or any questions to councillor Davies? No? Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, what, what we? Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, yeah.
Sorry, I'm really tired today. Identification of other potential locations in Yarra where the introduction, expansion or revitalisation of regular pop-up markets could be explored. I figure if we're going into it, we may as well have a look into what else we could do around other areas in Yarra outside of Richmond.
That is, yeah, I think it's a good idea. That is, yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I would like this to rise as a procedural motion to defer, Andrew, because since you've been elected as the new business advisory group for chair that, we need to hear from them before this, you know?
Okay, before you speak to it, is there a second? Okay, so we have to defer first. Okay, so you have to speak, if you can, if you can only can speak to the motion, why do you think we should defer? So three minutes.
So Andrew, with this, why defer because since we need to better consult with our local Richmond traders and with the people that will be part of the new form business advisory committee, we need to hear from them before we make decisions. This is something to talk about, business people in Richmond. So that's why I want this to be deferred. Yep, thank you.
I'll just keep this brief because it's late. Look, I support the motion to defer this. councillor Ho is the ward councillor for Melba Ward, so I think we should respect that. And we've also got the new business advisory committee, which is, you know, literally, we will be appointing them later on this evening in the confidential part of the meeting. We've also just obviously appointed councillors to chair those committees. So I think, I think it would be good to actually take the time to go through this and so if we can have a deferral, I think until the, you know, to the business advisory committee can meet and look at this would be my suggestion. And I don't know, I can't really indicate a timeframe here because I think we don't know at this stage when the business advisory committee will have its first meeting, but I'll leave that.
Thank you. I've just got a question. So it says here that, like it's the most barren Spartan motion I've seen in all my time on council, that this item be deferred to a future meeting. So while I, this is a question to councillor Ho and councillor Harrison, while I understand their argument that it needs to go to the business advisory committee, which we're about to set up, just the way it is at the moment, that could potentially be in 10 years' time. Do you know what I mean? Like it doesn't have a, like, so I would strongly encourage you to either, like, well, if you, it's just very vague. It needs to say until the business advisory committee is met, which could be quite imminently.
Can I ask a question of the officers about what the timing they think would be of at least the first business advisory committee meeting now that we are establishing the new committee?
CEO, did you, okay, Phil Delosse?
Thanks councillor Harrison, through you, Mayor. The best we would think is September, but it could be October, so.
Next month. Okay, is that your question answered?
So could we ask councillor Davies whether it's agreeable perhaps to defer until?
The first meeting after the business advisory committee?
The first meeting after the business advisory committee or perhaps November is maybe just given the timing?
Okay, so just before you answer that councillor Davies, CEO wants to comment?
I think, I think December would be better because if it's late September then we, you know, we miss the cycle, so, or if it's in October, we miss the cycle, so December with an, you know, with an update, yeah.
Thank you councillor Davies, do you want to respond? You don't have to, but you've been, like that question about?
Well, I think it's for the mover and the second of the procedural motion.
Well, it's for councillor Davies and myself as a secondary, yeah, but it goes to councillor Davies first, so.
I, sorry, go.
It's being amended, it's going to be.
Okay, I've just been informed, sorry councillor Davies, I misinformed you because it's a procedural motion that has to be just dealt with. So my question to the mover of the procedural motion and the second, in other words councillor Ho and councillor Harrison, can we change that to say that the item be deferred to the first meeting after the business advisory committee meets? That's a question. You can just say yes or no.
Yes.
Councillor, okay, so can we get the governance officers to change that? Just the left at his own, I mean, I'm not saying, you know, I mean theoretically if the councillors, council officers came back in 10 years, they would be able to look at that and say, well, you never told us, do you know what I mean? Okay, so now we've got a motion that's moved, we can debate it, but it has to be moved. So you've spoken to it, you've spoken to it, now we're going to ask for, I'm going to ask for contributions from any councillor on the deferral motion. Anyone want to speak to the deferral motion? You don't have to? No. Yeah, councillor Wade?
I don't feel super strongly on this, but it seems to make sense to wait till after business advisory and also I'm keen, if councillor Ho needs a bit more time with it too, given it's his ward, so I'll be voting for it, but it's not a super strong feeling.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, councillor Gomez?
So I think we decided late, early tonight that councillor Davies and myself would be the co-chairs, I guess, of the business advisory committee. I think this would be something fantastic to talk to them about because I know the calibre of some of the people on that committee will be very, very good. And I'm, I'm very, very cognizant of the fact that this is Melba Ward where it's at and councillor Ho should be given the respect of dealing with this issue.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this deferral? councillor Davies?
I think the key will be just making sure that we aren't delayed forever and ever because just for clarity, this has been discussed with the Bridge Road Traders Organisation and also at length with all the storeholders down at the market on a number of occasions. So it's not out of the blue or in from left field, it's also been shared internally. So I think just as long as we have a commitment to put it on, I would like to know though from, through you, Mayor, to the CEO, on the business committee, are there any storeholders or anyone represented, is anyone from the actual market represented on the business advisory committee that will be voting on this afternoon, this evening?
CEO?
Yeah, so councils get to make that appointment, councillor Davies, sorry, I can't answer that question.
Okay, anyone else want to speak to the deferral? No? Do you want to exercise your right of reply councillor Ho?
No.
Okay, I don't think actually there is a right of reply to a procedural motion, I think I messed up, sorry there. Okay, we're going to vote on the deferral, all those in favour of the deferral, please raise your hand. That has passed unanimously. Okay, we're going to go into confidential, so I just want to move a motion that we can go into confidential and we'll have a very, very, very short break. councillor Harrison?
Sorry, you've missed some stuff, missed general business, you've missed joint letters.
I've missed so many things. I'm trying to rush through here. Would people like to take a two-minute break now or do you want to do it? All right, let's take a three-minute break and then, okay, okay, let's just go. We haven't got much to do before it gets to confidential, so just bear with us. Okay, petitions and joint letters, we do have one joint letter, so councillor Gomez, please take the floor.
Thank you. I'm just putting to the chamber a joint letter about the Linear Parklands Master Plan. I read out the preamble. It's a joint letter containing 32 signatures from residents requesting that council reconsider that residents be considered as a priority, that the current park-street-pop-up bicycle path be removed altogether, this is all part of the master plan consultation, and that the current shared pedestrian slash bicycle path through the park be split to two paths, i.e. gravel path for pedestrians and the other for bicycles.
So refer to that?
That petition be tabled and referred to the appropriate officer. I'll second that. All those in favour of just accepting that petition? But just by the way, for anyone who doesn't know, it doesn't mean that you necessarily agree with the petition, it's just a democratic thing where we hand it over to the relevant officer. Any other joint letters or petitions? No? Any questions without notice? No? Any delegates' reports? No? Any general business? Yes, councillor Wade?
I do have an item of general business that I'm hoping staff can put up on screen. Would you like me to read that out?
I think it's short enough that they can read. I'm quite happy to second it. I think all the, all the people in the crowd, and there's a question from councillor Mackenzie to yourself, councillor Wade?
So what would we be, it says for consideration for our, is it our mid-year budget review or making a submission? Like, are you saying that we would, if, yeah, I'm very confused by this, like, because obviously there's factor estate asset, so what's the budget that we would allocate to it, just doing more work on doing the work that the state should be doing themselves?
Pretty much. So it's a report that ideally would include a ballpark figure for doing this kind of work and if we wanted to do this kind of work, it would be referred to the mid-year review.
So this, as a second, I can just say it's not committing us to a cent, it's committing us to finding out how much it would cost and a decision on that would be made at a future occasion, if I've understood the motion correctly. Any other questions at this stage? No? I'm going to ask you to speak to your motion, please, three minutes starting now.
Firstly, I wanted to apologise for this coming relatively late in the day, which now feels like a million years ago, but it was relatively late in the day. Not, everybody in our community is across the council meeting schedule and I think as you all know, we get questions at random times and sometimes they, they come at an inconvenient window. The reason that I want to do this is I just, the state absolutely should be doing this themselves, that is my ideal outcome. If the state did this themselves, I will absolutely withdraw this, I don't think we need to do it. It's because at the moment, there is just nobody who's doing this work, who's looking into whether there are other options. We know that work like this has occurred, that other councils have paid for work like this, City of Sydney paid an organisation to kind of do this work with their public housing residents to try to see if there are any options and it can lead to different outcomes. Given the council priorities that we have and have just been articulated and voted on again, when there isn't any work on whether something can be refurbished, that work needs to get done so that we can have a proper conversation. So in an ideal world, yes, the state government will do it and we'll have a proper conversation. In a not ideal world, depending on the cost, I think it would be reasonable for us to do that work and have that conversation. The figure I had out of Sydney was about 50K, that might be, okay, well, that might be enough that already would put people off, I don't know, but I would like to get the number so we can have that conversation. If this is a priority for us, trying to, trying to stop the demolition of public housing in our community, I think we should know what the options are and if the state government are not telling us those options, I think we should find out for ourselves.
Thank you. I'm not going to speak at this late hour, I think all the points have been made. Would anyone like to speak to this motion? Okay, well, there's no right of reply, we'll just put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hand. councillor Wade, Aston, Harrison, it's unanimous, okay. Are there any urgent business items? Okay, so what we're going to do, we're going to have a five-minute break, we'll come back, go into confidential. So thank you all for coming and we'll be back in five minutes. Let's just knock this out of the park, so please don't take more than five minutes. We're still in public here, technically. I move, I'm seeking a mover of a motion that the meeting be closed to members of the public in accordance with section 62A of the Local Government Act to allow consideration confidential matters. Moved by deputy mayor councillor Mackenzie, seconded by councillor Gomez, is there any discussion on that? All those in favour, please raise your hand. We're now in confidential.